We're back in regular session. And, Mr. Bell, would you lead us? As a longtime teacher, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you, Mayor Breeden. It'd be an honor and a privilege. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to know if we could all just have a moment of silence or prayer for our community, our first responders, that God would continue to watch over this great city. If you would join us. Thank you.
Please be seated. The next item on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report out of closed session. Mr. Lemieux?
Sure. Board met, I'm sorry, the City Council met in closed session to discuss potential litigation that we identified as County Superintendent of Schools versus City of Ridgecrest. Received a report from District Council. Following discussion, there was no reportable action taken. Madam Mayor, that concludes the report. I will have a little bit to offer you regarding the formation of the Joint Powers, our GSA, as part of item number five. So I'll save my comments on that for that time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item is public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on these items that do not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Public comment, please. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor Breeden. City Council members, members of the community. I'm here this evening to extend a warm invitation to all of our City Council members and the mayor to a groundbreaking ceremony for our new school, Murray Middle School, which is going to be located over by Burroughs High School, and also groundbreaking for the modernization of Sherman E. Burroughs High School. This is a culmination of over five years of work, hard work, by many of our community leaders, many of the leaders on the base, and also congressional leaders and senators. So, we're excited about this event. I just wanted to be here this evening to extend a personal invitation to each of you to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we all are. I think there's a couple that aren't going to be able to, but I know we're all looking forward to it, and we thank you for the invitation and invite the public to join us. Thank you. Mr. Witnick?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before, I was planning on just coming down here to just attend the meeting as I normally do until I got an email. Got an email from the Sheriff's Office, Public Affairs Office. Did you folks see the recent Sheriff's Office email that came out just today?
Yes, sir. I think our chief is going to talk about it later on in his report.
Okay, very good. I would like to, in case the people have not heard it yet, the Sheriff's Office got a budget cut of $1.1 million. These budget cuts are going to take effect February 20th, and he went through a list of cuts that he's going to be making to save that $1.1 million. But the last one is the one that gets me. Effective February 20th, the Ridgecrest jail will be closed and all detention staff will be reassigned to Lurdo facilities to fill funded vacancies. This jail will eliminate booking and housing services in the northeast area of our county. This will affect the Kern County Sheriff's Office and Allied Agency's ability to book prisoners in Ridgecrest. Deputies and Allied Agency officers will be required to transport their addresses to the Mojave Jail. This will cause the arresting officers to be out of their jurisdictions for increased periods when transporting and booking prisoners at the Mojave Jail.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm now outraged. Okay? All the cuts that he made, none of them affect the city, a city in Kern County for an expense that we're going to possibly have to undertake for this. Every single cut is just moving officers around to unfunded positions, which is fine. I have no problem with that. What I have a problem with is Ridgecrest is the city that is going to suffer, along with California City, but they don't have near the drive that our officers will. Putting officers off the street for three hours every time they have to book somebody into jail. And they're taking the officers that are assigned here to fill unfunded vacancies at Lurdo. Why doesn't he bring those unfunded vacancies over here to keep our jail open? Obviously, if there are vacancies over there, he doesn't need them. We need them here in Ridgecrest. We have our officers that are going to be off the street, and I am outraged at that. And I hope you will too, become outraged. When you start thinking of the impact, now, the chief does not know I was coming up here, so he has, and I'm speaking as a private citizen here, but I'm telling you, this is not appropriate. I've not had a chance to talk to Mick Leeson about this yet, because this office, this announcement came out at 2:40 this afternoon, is when I got this press release. And I hope I'm getting all worked up over nothing. I hope maybe tomorrow I would hear something and say, "Oh, no, it's not a problem. Everything's going to be okay, and here's what we're doing." But I want you to consider one thing. When we start talking to the county, I know we also pay them over $200,000 a year for jail facilities and sheriff services. Okay? I hope we think about that $200-plus thousand a year that we're giving them for these services and the fact that now our officers will be on the street and off of, not available for service, here for three hours every time they're gone. That's a $200,000 bill we are supporting, and they're taking it right off us and putting us right into it. Again, every other cut impacts no city like it does Ridgecrest and California City. The impact and the potential impact to our officers, I think, is not appropriate. Again, if he's got unfunded vacancies, well then distribute those vacancies where they're the most needed, where the impact will be the least. And making our officers on the road for that amount of time and taking them out of our city for service is outrageous. Thank you.
Tom, thank you. Other public comments, please?
How are you doing? I'm Robert Shine and live in Heritage Village. I know you guys are aware of where the heliport used to be located across from the hospital. And evidently, they probably have lost the ability to use that pad, and they moved it, wanted to move it behind the hospital, and they moved it. I know the council was approached back then, and I think in 1972, they thought it was a bad idea back then, but later on, it was approached. They sent a letter to us in, basically in Heritage, saying that they're going to put the pad in there, that it was going to be rarely used, only on the rarest of occasions, and that's all we were told. We weren't approached about it, environmental impact, report or community impact. And to tell you the truth, for, I've lived there for 30 years, and many of the community members lived there for a long time, too. And we've been there for 30 years, and to tell you the truth, it's been great. Seldom did they bring a helicopter in. But now, in the last eight, nine months, started getting traffic unbelievable. We would have maybe say four to six flights a year. Now, in June, we had, and these are, these are low estimates, because I'm not always there when those flights come in. I've got to work, everybody's got to work. So basically, in July, we had 16 flights, and nine of them-
How many? Sixty?
Sixteen, and that's probably a lowest sixteen. And I would say, and nine of those were between 10 o'clock and 8:00 in the morning, waking everybody up. In August, there were six flights that I know of, four of them were between 10 and 8:00 a.m. In September, there was 10 flights, of which six were between 10 and 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and it goes on and on. So we've contacted Mercy Air. They come in over the top of our houses in the middle of the night. They'll shake our houses, virtually shake a house. And we've talked to Mercy Air and the hospital, both of them pointing at the other people, saying, "That's Mercy Air's. The way they come in, they're restricted because of wind." We've seen the windsock. It'll be dead 99% of the time. That windsock is not moving. They don't make effort to get elevation. They shake our houses. They don't make an effort. You've got that entire field between Kmart and, and basically, the motel to fly out through and angle out away from the houses. They fly in over to Mesquite High School. You've got a high school there. My wife's had a preschool in our backyard for 21 years, and that's directly along the back of the path. They fly directly. The hospital added that second story and the additional building, so they restricted the flight path once again without contacting us and narrowed their field and their ability to fly those helicopters in and out. Now, we've contacted the hospital. They said they have made no changes in the way they do business. Well, I don't know how you go from four to six flights a year to up to as many as, like I said, we're talking here in June, 16 flights in a, in a, in one month. And many of those will be 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. Now, we've had them come in and out, not only come in and out, but fly to Indian current in between and fuel up and come back and re-land again. We've had up to eight flights in one night because of them refueling. Now, I understand they've got to fly some of these, but whatever changes they've made in their policies, make money or whatever it may be, this is not what they promised. And for the better part of probably 20-some-odd years, they did great. So now they keep pointing fingers at each other, but we're tired of those flights coming over the top of our houses and shaking us awake in the middle of the night, in and out, in and out. We've had them sit there for four hours. Come in at 5:00 in the morning, sit for four hours. Really? What's the emergency? They can, they bought the property across the street, and they say they're going to put that helipad on top of the new emergency ward. I said, "Well, when's that going to be?" "Oh, three to five years." Okay, simple calculations, three to five years, in three years, that's 360 flights. Five years, 600 flights. That's, that's not what we signed up for, and that's not what we were promised when that pad went in. These are all people, and they can tell you about the flights that they've had flying over the houses, shaking the houses. And some of the pilots will actually make an effort. Other ones, they don't care. There's nobody out there at midnight, 2:00 in the morning. They'll fly right over the top of our houses and just shake them to pieces. And I'll let these people live in these houses, and there's about five or six of us, but there's about seven or eight of us that are dealing with this.
Mr. Shine, are you asking us to, because I'm not sure what you want us to do, to find out information or seek solutions or both?
Well, basically, the council gave, the council gave them the permission to have the pad in there, and then that stipulation, they said-
And that was in 1972?
No, that was originally, I believe, when they were talking about putting the pad behind the hospital and thought it was a bad idea back then. We have another, excuse me, another community member that has some more information, and we can gather that for you and give you to each of you if you'd like. We have pictures.
Then I'll wait and wait for all the answers. Thank you.
All right.
Hi, I'm Jay Winkle, and I live right next to the helipad. And I've had my family out there, and they have, prop washed us and blasted us with sand and everything by taking off the incorrect way, being, you know, disrespectful to my family and the houses. And when other times they take off, they're, they're doing it correctly, and that would be nice, but if, you know, having it there is just pretty much not nice, the way they're taking off, the pilots and the way they are performing their takeoffs and coming in. So I would like to just see if they could find a solution to that and make it nice.
Mr. Winkle, you said that, I'm sorry, I said I wasn't, I was going to wait till you're all done, but have you talked to the, to Mercy?
We called Mercy Air and stuff and, yes, and sent off times and stuff of flights of how high they were coming over our houses and how low it was and what they did. And I have a video of showing them what they're, what they did and how it just blasted us with sand and everything, because they went right over the house.
Okay.
I have my daughter, my little four-year-old, and them running in the house scared of the helicopters now, because here, they think, you know, the helicopter's doing, it's what we're doing a really good thing and helping out, and that's awesome. And I want, you know, have them there saving lives, but not to do it the way they're doing it and having them scared and running because they're getting pelted with sand and, and-
Okay.
-afraid of, you know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I wasn't trying to cut you off. I was thanking you for answering my question. Did you have more to say?
I, I, that's, I-
Okay.
We have a video if you wanted, if you guys need it sent to you somehow.
If you could, that would be-
I have it on my phone and, uh-
Rachel, can they send it to your, to you?
You can see how bad it is on his video.
Yeah, and he has a bigger picture of it on his tablet. If you guys would like to see it.
If you would send it to Mrs. Ford, and she will distribute it.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Can I ask you, gentlemen, who at the, who at the hospital have you talked to about this?
Bill Campbell, 946 Roosevelt. Of course, we all live behind, kind of behind the hospital, and my complaint is the last year or so that they, the helicopters haven't been doing what they did in the past, or the more we complain about it to them. And we went to our community council meeting and we, you know, and they called, called in too, so, but it seems like they've made the helicopter guys mad, so they come up. It seems like they're, they're getting even with us for reporting them, so that's my problem. I've been in my backyard where I couldn't hardly see with the world around. So, anyway, thanks for listening to us, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. And your last name was Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Roger Stewart. I live at 946 Roosevelt. Been living there for about 30 years or more, and I understand emergencies, and I truly understand that there may need to be a helopad somewhere for flights for people. But I didn't think that I would be onboard an aircraft carrier in the middle of the night getting up for sorties. And I served in the military for over 20 years, almost 22 years, and here lately, I think that I'm onboard the aircraft carrier, getting ready to jump out to go do some sorties. And I don't know what you can do about it. I don't have a clue what you can do about it. You asking who I call, who I go to? You get the runaround. Who, I'm asking you to find out who to go to, and I'm asking you to go and get us some information so that we can figure out what we need to do to cut down on the flights, because you approved it, so you must be the source that we must go to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Real quick, if I may, before we move on to the, another topic. Have any of you gentlemen talked to anybody at the hospital? If I could ask you, who have you, who have you spoken to?
Well, I had gone over there and talked with one of the ladies, the ladies, and I, you know, this was just impromptu. I can get you names and everything else, but-
That's okay.
They've also had the, I believe, the chairman's executive assistant talk to, and he says, you know, "Well, we'll talk to Mercy Air, but it's not really our problem. It's, you know, the way they have to take off and land is what they have to do." I think Bill contacted him the other day at the hospital, and they said, "You know, those chopper pilots can do whatever they want." And that was his answer. And Mercy Air, we talked, attacked Melissa at Mercy Air. She says, "Well, we sent out memos to the pilots, and we've done our due diligence, and so far as we're concerned, it's not our problem. It's the hospitals. They call us, they're the ones that have to deal with it." But in either case, I've looked it up on the internet, yeah, the hospital is responsible. The pads and the dirt that's blown up, I've stood in my backyard and covered the last four houses with dirt.
I'd recommend, if you can get ahold of Jim Suver at the hospital, he's the CEO of the hospital. Every time I've brought an issue to him, he's been incredibly responsive. He, most likely, he'll be very helpful for you, so.
Well, like I said, we've contacted them both and gone over there in person, and all I got was basically the runaround. I even had the, the gentleman, I can get you his name, basically told me to stop badgering the gal that I originally contacted, who said she would forward the information to somebody and contact me back in a couple of days. I waited three or four days, got nothing, called her back again, left a message that I still hadn't gotten anything, and then he calls me and tells me to stop badgering her, when she was the one that told me to call her back.
Okay, we, we, we understand that you've got issues, and we're going to help you seek solutions as we can within our authority, and I understand that. I don't want to dismiss you, but I do want to know if you have any facts of people you spoke to, if you could also forward those to Mrs. Ford or myself or any of us. We would like that information, too.
You bet. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
We can forward all that information to her.
Okay. Thank you.
Evening, Benny Fuller. So my, actually, I'm just bringing up something we talked about a little last week when I made the proposal about getting a grant for resurfacing our roads and then putting in the fiber optic at the same time. So you had mentioned that the next city council meeting, there's going to be a company-
On the 17th.
Okay. And what's the name of that company, and you had given a brief outline of what they're planning on doing, or the people that are going to be here?
They're going to give a report from, based on the Economic Development Committee that was established in, in June, a report of the efforts they've made so far and the solutions they are looking at and the companies they've contacted. I don't, haven't seen the report yet, so I can't tell you what's in it, but I encourage you to be here on the 17th and, and talk to them, and that would be the best, because I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah. And what was the name of that group?
Broadband Economic Development Committee. We didn't give the committee's names. They broke up into, there was seven committees that broke up into, there were seven committees that were formed as they broke up. That was one of them, was the broadband committee.
Okay, but we'll, we'll be looking for public comment, although I've mentioned there's some people in the, there's been interest of people coming in.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
The more information, the better.
Are they looking, is it going to be more of like a collaborative effort, or is it just going to be like a report?
A collaborative effort? The report is a collaborative effort from all those-
A, I'm looking for a, I'm blanking on the word right now, interactive presentation.
I believe it will be, because you will have the, no, I know it will be, because it'll be on the agenda, and you'll have time to respond and ask questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Benny. Thank you. Mr. Neal?
To the City Council and to the citizens of Ridgecrest. California Constitution, Article One, Section One. All people are by nature free and independent and have inalienable rights. Among these are enjoying and defending life, liberty, acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and pursuing and obtaining safety, happiness, and privacy. Article One, Section 7A. A person may not be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law or denied equal protection of the laws. Article One, Section 16. Trial by jury is an inviolable right and shall be secured to all. Let me repeat. A person may not be deprived of property without due process of law. A person may not be deprived of property without due process of law. Trial by jury is an inviolable right and shall be secured to all. Trial by jury shall, is an inviolable right and shall be secured to all. I repeat myself, because these rights are being totally ignored in this town. Mr. Dale Howard now sits on the verge of becoming pitiless and homeless because of his unjust persecution by the city over having a few sea vans and peacocks on his property. The latest nail in his coffin is this, an email he received on January 29th from the city's attack dog receiver firm, and here's the relevant portion of that email about costs they're further accessing on him. $60,000 plus interest is the amount owed. The lenders are going to begin the foreclosure if the amount is not paid in full. If the foreclosure process is going to start, then I'm going to file a motion to sell the property. This means his house, not his vacant lots. Please let me know if you're going to refine such a certificate. Well, unfortunately, Mr. Howard doesn't have $60,000 left. So after fighting for his rights for three years, spending all he has in the process, having his property taken from him in an unjust hearing, not a trial, before a Kern County Kangaroo Court, Mr. Howard is being told his house will be foreclosed or sold. No Article One rights for Mr. Howard, not one. The city's hired assassin is going to forge straight ahead and throw him out on the street. For any city to do this is the grossest denial of basic human decency. We will fine people for having a dog off-leash and biting someone, but the city can hire a black-hearted attack dog legal firm and set them loose on a citizen that the police have waged a vendetta against. All the while, this is justified as a police action that Mr. Howard could have bowed down to and then just ended it. Anything to pass the buck, justify, excuse it, or dilute the truth. The truth is that a citizen who fought for his rights has been mercilessly persecuted with our tax dollars and made an example so that we will fear the many tyrants of Ridgecrest. Just do as we were told, and everything will go well, except for keeping some self-respect, except for enjoying simple, basic justice. A Nazi state of Germany could not have abused their people better than Ridgecrest is doing in this case, all because not one council person or city staff saw fit to understand and work for the freedoms we're supposed to have, and because very few citizens saw fit to fight for their neighbor either. Now we can all look forward to being attacked and chewed on by our city anytime we choose to fight for our rights. Freedom, not in this town, not at present, anyway. We need some big changes in this city. God help us to either make them or resign ourselves to tyranny.
Thank you, sir.
I want to make a comment, you know. Approximately 100 birds is not a few birds. And as far as the sea vans and everything else, I'm a, I'm a general contractor, and back in the 2003, 2004, when we were going through the boom in Ridgecrest Heights, there wasn't a contractor in town that would buy a lot within two blocks of Dale Howard, because they knew they couldn't sell a new house there. So it did have an impact on other people. And like I say, 100 birds is not a few birds. He had a lot of birds there, and people all around there could hear him at all hours of the day and night.
Amazing, sir, how they couldn't take him to court over that issue and even get a conviction on that, could they? They took him to a just trial, couldn't do anything about that. Maybe that we just are too incompetent to do it the right way. So we got to go to this kangaroo court and get one judge with no count from Mr. Howard, no chance for him to face his accusers, and now we're going to make him homeless and pitiless. So you, you tell me that you think that's right. Challenge you that.
Okay, Mr. Porter?
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, council members. Before I get into what I really want to discuss about, I'm going to ask you some questions. I don't expect an answer, I just want you to think about them. First is bullying. The next is due process of law. Next is rule of law. Next is individual rights versus collective rights. What's occurring to Mr. Dale Howard is a black cloud over this, this city. First time I've ever truly been ashamed of this city. Regarding bullying, our government bodies have decided that we can now persecute people under civil law rather than criminal law. The reason they've done this is so that they can deny due process. They can put you before an executive branch. They can say, "This is a civil penalty," or whichever means they so choose, and they, and your decision, you have to go in and prove yourself innocent, not guilty. You have to prove that burdens move to you, and this is kind of the same thing here. But in this particular case, we have a government body that can out- But in this particular case, we have a government body that can outspend any citizen in this room that's going to use that money to make them broke. They don't have a chance at justice. They don't have a chance to, to face their accusers. And the reason I'm bringing this up to city council and the people of this city is because each and every one of you took an oath of office. And that oath of office was to protect and uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of California. Both of those constitutions state the individual is the most important thing you can protect, because if you don't protect the individual, there is no protection for any of us. It's not a collective effort, you have to look at the individual. In this particular case, California law only allows cities to write ordinances for public health and safety. While I agree that the, the droppings from those birds may have been a health question, but I read the decisions and I can't find anything there. But I also have a problem when you say, okay, Mr. Porter, I'm going to take you to court. I can't afford to defend myself. If I can't, then I'm being denied justice. I ask for this to be brought on the agenda of this council so we can sit and discuss it and say, how do we do this as a human being? How do we do this as a proper fashion? There are things that do need to be changed. There may have been a problem, but we don't do it by beating people down with government power. We don't allow the government to be the bully. And that's exactly what has happened here. The government began the bully. I have the money and I have the power and I'm going to be the bully. We have a judicial branch that was put in place by, in this nation by our founders for a very strong reason, to protect the people from the government. Unfortunately, today, our judicial branch is in place only to protect the government from the people. The government has the power. An individual against the government is not being protected by the judicial branch, stands very little chance of succeeding. And while you find a reason for these things, you have to first stand back and say, how do we do this? Where does it stop? What if I decided to paint my house purple and green and, and make it the ugliest thing you've ever seen and you couldn't even stand to drive down the street? Does that mean that, well, that's hurting the neighbor's property values? Well, ordinance, public health and safety have nothing to do with property value, absolutely nothing. The secondary factor is, one man's junk is another man's treasure. I'm not making any comments on this particular, but one man's junk is another man's treasure. I don't want to tell you how to live. I'm a firm believer in freedom and liberty. Even when the, even when the Declaration of Independence was written, our founding document in this nation, it now says pursuit of happiness. And Jefferson originally wrote that it was pursuit of property. You know why property was put there? Because it provided security, provided you the opportunity to become happiness. All I'm asking is that we need to think about, do we want a mobocracy? Or do we want people that sit in our government at all levels, not just here, and say, we want to protect the individual? Because when we protect our neighbor, we're being protected. If we want to protect the collective, we all lose. And, and some of this has to, and I think this needs to be brought up on the agenda and we need to have a public comment on it. I think we need to sit and talk about this. If, if anyone wants to sit down and say, okay, we want to have a meeting, I'm willing to stand up here and let any, a, a, a public meeting and let anyone try and, and tear down the, the principles that I'm bringing forth. I'll stand up to anything. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Elizabeth Frary, and I'm here to follow up on Robert's comments. On the night of January 27th, between 12:30 and 1 a.m., my husband and I were awakened by the arrival and departure of a helicopter at the hospital. What is different about this for us is not the noise that was made, though it was quite remarkable, but the sense that it was flying perilously low and close to our home. It sounded like it was traveling parallel to our bedroom windows, then south along the brick wall towards Drummond. Our bed was vibrating in its very heavy bed. I spoke to the FAA and Melissa Schmidt at Mercy Air. After these conversations, I discovered that I need to develop night vision in order to adequately give a description and tail number on helicopters before I can report any problems to these agencies. Melissa contacted her aviation manager and told me that, he said, there was no Mercy Air helicopter in Ridgecrest at that time. It was suggested to me by both the FAA and Melissa as a possible explanation for the incident, perhaps the pilot was inexperienced and did not know how to exit the area. That was not a comforting thought to me. My neighbor, Robert, told me later that he had gone outside that night and saw the helicopter, and it was from Mercy Air. Prior to moving to Ridgecrest, I worked at Las Robles Regional Medical Center in Thousand Oaks for a number of years. I'm very familiar with the importance of having medical transport helicopters available. When we moved into Heritage, we were aware that by living so close to the hospital, helicopters would be part of our environment. But should we have to be terrified by low-altitude flights over our home when there are other avenues available for arrival and departure? There is adequate open space to fly between the hospital and the parking lot by the blood mobile. I heard that the employees complained that the dust kicked up by the helicopters regarding their cars dirty, so some flight patterns were adjusted to accommodate them. Would it not be more prudent to pave the parking area to mitigate the dust problem rather than flying low over the adjoining residential area? Dirty cars are less of a concern than if there is an accident with potential loss of life and property. If wind is a factor, which it was not that night, then there should be not any flights in or out anyways. They should be using ground ambulances. As it is right now, the increased frequency of the flights are causing structural damage to our homes. The morning after this incident, I saw four popped nails in my hallway hot, wall. I would also question why there is an increase in traffic since about last June. What kind of flights are these? Ridgecrest Regional Hospital is not a trauma center. In my experience, those kinds of patients would most likely be picked up and transferred via medevac to a trauma center. If they are standard patient transport flights, there is no hurry to take unnecessary shortcuts. So where do we go next? Noise does not kill you. We live in a military town, and flying aircraft noise is job security for the majority of the population. But those pilots are not buzzing my house. I strongly feel that whoever the pilot was that night was putting our lives, our houses, our neighborhood, and the hospital in peril for no good reason. I'd like to add that during my research regarding this issue tonight, I found some interesting history of the area that is probably not new to the council. Dr. Thomas Drummond built the original hospital in Ridgecrest in 1945. He lived in Ransburg and flew in and out of Ridgecrest using the area that became my neighborhood as his landing strip. How ironic is that? I also found an interesting copy of The Rocketeer dated July 21st, 1972. The headline of the article is "Emergency Hillport Approved by California Aviation Consultant." The idea for a hill port was from a local resident by the name of Dan Butler, who was a member of the Rotary Club. I will quote a portion of the article. Quote, "Originally, the Rotary Club planned to place the hill port in the back of the hospital. It was when housing developments made that idea appear undesirable that Lieutenant George O'Grady, at the time Army Liaison Officer NWC, suggested making application for use of the Navy land directly across the street. In March, a formal request from the Rotary Club for use of Navy land received approval from command." The hill port was ultimately constructed by the Rotary Club volunteers. I also found a copy of a Ridgecrest City Council resolution dated November 18th, 1987, signed by Michael Maurer, Mayor, approving construction of the present-day hill port. I guess the idea of a hill port being built behind an established residential area was more desirable in 1987 than it was in 1972. My house was built in 1987. On November 18th, 2015, 29 years to the day after the prior approval, this council approved a motion for the sale of the property in the business park to the hospital expansion. If the hill port is to be relocated back to that area, I say it cannot happen soon enough. Thank you.
Thank you. You did an excellent job in five minutes. Can you tell me your last name, please? I did not catch it, Elizabeth.
It's Frary, F like Frank, R A R Y.
Thank you.
I come to you tonight a little bit reluctantly, but just because I didn't have an opportunity to have a well-typed-out statement like some before me, like my husband. But I come to you tonight with great passion in my heart, because this week, along with millions of other Americans, I watched with great sorrow and grief that another fellow American's blood was spilled in the snow because he dared to stand for the liberties that have been delineated in our constitution. Now, there will be many in this room, we will disagree on what all happened and what all was right and wrong and all the fine points. But I think most of us who can look beyond the corporate mainstream media's silence on the subject and can do the research and homework ourselves, understand, just as those who were on the ground in Oregon, who were not sitting at their little desk at a distance, they were there and they saw the truth of what happens when someone now in America stands for their liberties that the Constitution, our beloved, precious Constitution, has afforded us. Because they have done just like so many others here tonight that have tried to appeal to those who should be, excuse me, taking care of the, the situations, that should be answering the questions. But over and over and over, we're hearing that more and more American citizens are having their property taken from them, stolen. People's lives are being destroyed all around us, and those who sit in high places are That is not the justice we have been called to by the God that we say we trust. Again, we may not see, we don't have snow here in Ridgecrest, and so we may not see blood spilled in the snow. But we're seeing blood spilled in the sand of Mr. Howard's life, as those who have passed the buck and said, it's not my problem, it's a police issue, it's a this issue, it's a that issue. But the bottom line, folks, is just as my husband said and just as Mr. Porter said, Mr. Howard did not get his day in court. He was not allowed to face his accusers. And those here in Ridgecrest have sat, the police chief and some of the others, sat on the street, day after day after day after day, watching as Mr. Howard's life has been spent and poured out, and his lifeblood has been poured out on the sand. And I say, that's happened here in our town, just like it's happening all over our country. And this, folks, is the face of tyranny.
Thank you, Mrs. Neal. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, Dave Matthews, address is on file. I was, uh, competing with Mrs. Ford before the meeting started about what a shortage agenda we had tonight, but I guess I was wrong, huh, Rachel? I'm going to start with Mr. Whitnick's comments, because this is the first I have seen it. He showed me the paper, so I know what he's talking about is accurate. I, too, am outraged that the sheriff of the county would want to close down the county jail here in Ridgecrest. After all, we don't have sufficient, facilities to have our own, nor do we have the funds. I can't help but wonder, since Sheriff Youngblood is so familiar with this end of the county, that I wonder if he has really seen this. So I would urge everyone to let the county know, the supervisors, supervisors and the sheriff's department, how outraged we are. And it's such short of notice. The other thing about the helicopters, the heliport, when I came here in 1969, 68, excuse me, Dr. Drummond's airstrip was still visible over there. I know exactly where it went. The, there is, has been an increase in flights, I can tell, and I'm, I'm living a mile or so away from that heliport. Although I was over there picking up some records one day when one came in, and I, in fact, had to wait for it to take off again before I could, was, was actually shut down before I could get out of the parking lot. It was noisy, yeah. And in fact, they are so noisy sometimes that it, they vibrate my house, because I think they're coming in lower than they need to. And like I say, I'm a mile away. Now, I don't know why the hospital has not acknowledged that they have changed policy. There has been a policy change of some sort over there, and I'm not sure what the details are. But they have to, for whatever reason, fly in and out more patients. And probably, I don't know the cost of these things, and I don't care to find out, except for other purposes like this, what the difference between land transportation and air transportation might be. But from a mile away, I know there are more flights coming in and out. Now, the other thing that I want to talk about is, in God we trust, and I thank Mrs. Neal for mentioning that already. I want to add a correlation. And in the courts, we don't. I have witnessed too many things happening in the last several years, and too many court cases where it is very obvious to anyone who knows anything about the Constitution, about the way the legal system is operating in this country right now, that the justice system is broken. And people are being denied their constitutional rights. And I think that is why we have such a vibrant list of candidates for president this year. Hopefully, one of them will do the justice and revisions that need to be made. Mr. Howard is not the only one who is deprived of their trial, not necessarily by any legal means, but rather because of financial means. means, but rather because of financial means. It is so costly anymore to go to trial, to go to court, that most people can't afford it. And their rights there.
Mr. Matthews, your time has come up.
I understand, I know, I know, I heard it.
Thank you.
I just want to finish this one statement.
Thank you.
And that is that I wish I could win a lottery because what I would do is scour this country for a few good lawyers who would stand up and defend these people. Uh, pro bono. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Okay, the next item on the agenda is council announcements. Let's start down here. Jim?
I have none, thank you.
Mike?
I have none.
I have none. Okay, the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, that item may be removed from the council, from the consent calendar and be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Item number one, adopt a resolution to amend the professional services agreement an amount of $10,800, $10,080, with the engineer of record, Willdan Engineering, for additional construction inspection services on cycle five, signing and striping for 12 intersections, and authorize the city manager, Dennis Spear, to execute the amended agreement. Number two, adopt a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with the firm, Willdan Engineering, to provide environmental assessment, surveying, and design engineering for tax allocation, bond tab, street improvement projects for a fee of $39,100, and authorize the city manager, Dennis Spear, to sign the professional services agreement. Number three, adopt a resolution declaring equipment as surplus according to administrative services policy 0503, and by resolution number 0555, authorizing disposal of equipment in the engineering division. And number four, adopt draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority minutes dated January 20th, 2016. So any member of the council would wish one of these items to be polled?
No.
Public?
Number three.
Number three. Is that it? Okay, then we'll entertain a motion to adopt items number one, two, and four.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
For approve, one absent.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, item number three.
Yes, I just was wondering what this equipment was. I didn't get a chance to look into it anymore. Then what's on the agenda here?
Quite a list. Mr. Culp, did you want to read that, or how did you want to do that?
Uh, yes, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, I'd be glad to read the list to you. I'm pulling it up presently. I can summarize, however, as my agenda item loads here. There were several pieces of equipment within the engineering department, plotters, copiers, television, an older cathode ray tube television set, VHS tape recorder. I think we also had a battery backup for computers.
Mr. Culp?
Yes. Oh, thank you. Apologize, this is not loading as quickly, but the list is a, an old cathode tube Magnavox TV, VCR, VHS player. We had a, an older printer.
Maybe I can save you some time. Is it all office equipment?
Yeah, it's all office equipment, Dave, and it was stuff that was broken that wasn't...
Is any of it possibly up for auction or bid?
Uh, we have an outlet which is a governmental internet site that has surplus property that people can bid upon. However, many of these items are simply inoperable.
Okay.
They're broken, and they simply don't operate, or they're not, they're not, no longer serviced by the company which manufactured them.
Okay, well, that's fine. I, I just wanted to make sure, like somebody said before me here, one man's junk is another man's treasure, or something like that.
Mr. Matthews, these are all 10 to 20 years old, and most of them obsolete.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that item? Okay, motion?
I move approval of item three?
Second.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
For approve, one absent.
Okay, discussion, item number five, discussion and action items. Discussion and provide direction to the city manager to execute a task order with Lemieux and O'Neal to negotiate and draft a joint powers agreement for the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Mr. Lemieux?
Sure. I think for purposes of clarity, it might be useful to describe what this motion isn't tonight, because there's been some inquiry about that. This is not a motion tonight to approve a JPA or any other form of entity for the JSA, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Instead, this is a request, the issue is that the work that's, that our office is being asked to perform in connection with this new entity is not covered by the current retainer agreement. So we're asking the, the, the city council to direct the city manager to enter into a task order with us, similar to what we would do for litigation, in order to handle the work associated with the formation of the JPA. The, however, unlike litigation, this is transactional work, so it's billed at a much lower rate. And so we've recommended an hourly billing rate, I think, I forget what the letter said, I think it said 215 an hour. We have done some work already in connection with this because we had to start working on it in order to participate in certain meetings that have taken place. And so we would ask that that, that you direct the city manager to allow that to be billed as well as a transaction, as a, an item under the task order. Regarding those discussions, I've been asked to report on our progress. We've had a number of discussions with the mutual water companies, who are private pumpers, who had concerns about representation on the JPA board. It's always a mistake to try to characterize, we have not reached any final agreements with them regarding the form of that, but, and it's a mistake usually to comment on the shape of discussions before you get an agreement, for fear that you might change the outcome. But I can tell you that so far, the discussions have been very positive. Right now, there's work being done to try to see if those parties can get a say regarding decisions of the JPA board, without necessarily sitting on the JPA boards, that they feel that they have their concerns properly aired and considered by the JPA board before there's action taken. And we're sort of discussing the form that that might take right now. As I said, it seems to be moving in a positive direction in that regard. There's further meetings scheduled for, I think the next one might be tomorrow, but I have to double check, and then next week as well. The goal would be to try to wrap this up pretty soon. I'm told that the city, the county is going to have a resolution approving the JPA as the form sometime later this month, and that there's a draft agreement that's sort of floating around right now that we'll do some work on. So hopefully, sometime in the next couple months, we'll bring you back a, a, an agreement for the formation of the JPA for approval. And that will be the point where we can discuss, maybe in more detail, the various terms of that. Ideally, it will be something that will be agreed to by all the parties. Any questions about that?
So you want us to make a motion to direct the city manager to...
Authorize us to do that work.
Is there any public comment on that?
Again, Ronald Porter. While I understand the city attorney narrowed this a bit, and I understand what he said, we have a problem here that I see in the city, the city should be very much concerned about, and in the county and anywhere else. I haven't found that their, the defined powers of this new agency, and how they're going to be responsive to the city and anyone else, has been properly taken. We very much better be concerned about how much power we give an agency over our daily lives with, these are going to be unelected people. These aren't even going to be elected. We can't even get rid of them. We're not even sure right now how they're going to be appointed. But to get back to Mr. Lemieux's statement, if the city is incurring costs with this, they should bill the state for them. California Constitution says when we incur a cost by their statute, they have to pay it. And I have a feeling, I mean, what he's talking about, Ryan, I really don't have a problem with, but this may get far, far more involved. The amount of say the city may have in it. This is in its infancy, and we don't know how radical it's going to come out. We may end up having to pay Mr. Lemieux's staff to all kinds of research that will come out of budget we could use for other purposes. But under the California Constitution, they're mandated to pay for this because it's a cost that's being incurred. And that's something that should be brought to the attention and put on an agenda and say, "How are we going to do this?" They did that because the state kept moving tasks to the cities and the counties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Do you want me to address that, or...
I would, if you would, please.
Uh, this isn't an unfunded mandate. The alternative to the city getting involved is that this is controlled and run by the state. That's an option. But my understanding, I wasn't here for the meeting, but my understanding is that the city's direction has been that the city wants to be involved in this formation so as to preserve local control. And that's something that we're voluntarily doing. It's not something that the state's forcing us to do necessarily, although I guess you could say they're forcing us because if we don't do it, they will. As far as the budget is concerned, I don't expect this to be, this is a defined project. It's, we're going to come back to you with an agreement, and then we can decide at that point if there's any additional work. I'm hoping there's not, but we'll see. And we'll be continuing to update the city manager on that.
Thank you. And while I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you at all, and I understand exactly what he said, I just have a feeling that this may become far more involved, and you may become far more involved. And while I understand the state's argument, the city council needs to understand is, that's under threat, and that doesn't abolish the California Constitution as far as they're required to pay for it. And because it impacts you, and you do have to, you do have to act on it to do your diligent duty, they should have to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rittor?
Stan Rittor. There was, there's one word in the description of item five that I was curious about. It says that you are to negotiate and draft a joint powers agreement. Who are you negotiating with?
That would be with the other potential members of the joint powers agency.
Okay. And I guess I'm not sure how you're going to negotiate without having direction from the council on what the council's position is relative to any negotiations. It's sort of an open-ended thing that sort of puts you out on the leading edge of the sword, when my feeling is you shouldn't quite be there. But I, but that aside, I guess I do personally have a concern about what the county is trying to push. Apparently, that's coming back later, but later is sometimes too late. So just to be on the record, my feeling is we've got a water problem, and we need to find a solution to our water problem. In order to do that, I think we need all parties to be working together. I think working together and being inclusive is very important. We need to build a consensus with all the people involved, because building a consensus is the best way to make things work. And I'm afraid what the county has in mind, and I'll be honest with you, I don't have a solution to the, the legal issues as opposed to the technical issues. But, but I know, like a lot of people, I know what I don't like. And my feeling is that what, where the county is headed is building walls rather than consensus. And when those walls get too high, what's going to happen is going to lead to litigation. And I'm real concerned that we, we already have enough litigation in our city, and if we become a part of another organization that has more litigation, we're just going to get so inundated with litigation that we don't actually remember what our original problem is. I'm reminded that there were, there was actually another way of doing a GSA other than the JPA, which requires control. And I think of control like a power, and it's going to upset somebody. There was a memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding way of doing this, and I think we already have enough agencies involved. And any power that the GSA might need is somehow owned and already there, existing within one of those other agencies. I, I listened to Mr. Sanders' talk last week or two weeks ago about not wanting this agency to have non-elected officials, and I, and I think, I, actually, after thinking about it, I agree, it's a very good point. However, I wonder how much, if we did allow the mutuals to have an input, even a voting input, how much power does this organization really need, since the agencies that are part of it already have all that power, already? And, and I think if we were to be more willing to try to build consensus, rather than building up walls between the various organizations, we, we might be much better off in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did you want to respond?
I, I think your points about building consensus are, are well taken, and I can tell you that I've, I've been present in meetings where discussions have, have happened between the groups, and that's, seems to be the county's goal, as far as I can tell, and we're trying to aid in that as well. So I'm currently optimistic that we'll get a consensus on the form. As far as your, your comments about the powers are concerned, the GSA would have powers that would, by statute, that would be different and exceed the powers of the individual members. Looking here, I got a letter I drafted a while back. Specifically, the powers associated with assessing regulatory fees to pay for water management and replenishment activities, I think that's, needs to be present if we're going to be able to manage the basin, and the GSA is the form to allow that to happen. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, the county council was indicating in at least two meetings that I was in, if you allow a private group into the GSA or the JPA, and I get those things confused all the time, then, then basically, what she was saying, you know, the, the control is neutered. You, you have no power at all, because you only have the power that you have in common, which comes out of some JPIA act or something. And what, what the county council was trying to claim is, you can't let these people in because then you have no power. And I guess what I was trying to point out is, through an MOA organization, you, you would still have all of the powers granted to those individual organizations. Does that make any sense to you?
You meant MOU, I think, but the, the, you're referring to the common powers doctrine, and that has to do with who's sitting on the JPA board as a voting member on the board.
Yes.
What, what we're currently exploring is, is... What, what we're currently exploring is, is options that allow those private parties to influence the course of events without specifically sitting on the board. And that, that is a compromise that sort of addresses the county's concern about loss of governmental powers such as eminent domain powers and so on, while still allowing public participation.
Okay. Well, that, you know, as long as all of the people who need to be part of the consensus or the solution are a part of the consensus, and they're all willing to go along with that, that's great. My only concern is that you're going to have one holdout, and you can't have one holdout because it only takes one to take us to court, and that's the last thing we need. But if, if you're working the problem and think you can do it, that's great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
One thing, Stan, you said that Wayne, Wayne, sorry, Keith, that Keith was going to negotiate and without input from us, and that he is, the decision will be with the council. It will not be with the attorney. He's making recommendations and, and.
That's right. That's going to be, that would be reviewed and approved at a public meeting after discussion.
Once you get so far downstream, he, he's putting a lot of work and effort into getting his negotiations with somebody done, and if he doesn't have some type of early direction as to where to focus his efforts, he could come back with something that you all didn't like.
Yeah, I think.
That was my, my concern, and I, and I haven't actually heard the council in the last couple of meetings actually give any direction.
The direction we gave was that we wanted to work with a JPA, that we wanted to be a voting, I think the letter said, a voting member of the JPA.
Yes. As I recall, though, when that letter actually went out, there, there wasn't any discussion about who would be members, or the fact that if you let non-agency members in, that the agency wouldn't have any power. So, so I, I absolutely remember what you're, you said, but there wasn't enough definition at that point in time to, I mean, things have changed since that letter went out, I guess is what I'm trying to point out.
I have, and we're going to get a report from Mr. Lemieux after his meetings with the other attorneys, and we will get reports, remember, on the, oh, I hope it's, it's the Friday after the third Wednesday. There will be a GSA meeting here at city council at 9:30, I believe. Have I got that right? 9:30?
I've got a lot of meetings on my calendar.
Wait a minute. Let me, let me tell you for sure. And, and the public is invited, and it is February 19th at 9:30 here.
Yeah. No, I applaud your efforts if you can actually get people to agree on that form, whatever the structure is, that would be great. At one point in time, it looked like there were some dissenters out there that weren't going to go happily along with what the county wanted. And it didn't look like my, when I was listening to the county people talking, it didn't look like they cared, in my personal opinion. I, I appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, let me just say a couple of things about this. You know, it's not unusual for, for me to be in a, because the Brown Act, you know, I can't have private meetings with the, with the city council, engage their opinion on things that are not litigation, for example. So if it's a public item, and this is absolutely a public item, I have to get my direction in public. So I, I've gotten a sense from these meetings where they're headed, but ultimately, when I'm talking to people, all I can tell them is what I would recommend to the city council be in the agreement, and then I'm, we'll, we'll come a day where we'll have an agreement in front of the city council, and I may learn that they decide they disagree with my recommendation. It wouldn't be the first time, and we might have to go back for another round of discussion. But all of that's going to happen in public, and their decision is going to be made in public. So, but again, we're not there yet. And, and I don't want to oversell the, I mean, we're, we're trying to work out a consensus. I'm currently optimistic, but we don't have a deal right now, and as you pointed out, you know, there's a lot of people involved. So the, the other thing to keep in mind is, is not to get too excited about the back-and-forth of a negotiation because people take positions at certain points, and then later on, they take a different position. That's just what happens. So it's entirely possible that people end up in a different place by the time we get ink on paper, but we'll see where we go.
Yeah. Yeah, just, just as long as we avoid litigation, I think we're in great shape.
Thank you, sir.
That's the goal.
That's it. Mr. Neal.
Mr. Lemieux, since we have you here, I've seen at least two conflicting documents about the powers of the GSA, proposed powers. One had, had a pretty detailed list of the powers it's going to have. The other had almost nothing. So I want to ask you, what you're aware of at this time, what's being, I guess, on the table? You mentioned power delivery fees. How about the power of eminent domain?
It would have that power, sure.
Okay. That's, that's, that's what I'd seen before, but yeah, okay. So basically, the power.
It would have all of the, if it's a JPA with, with the counties and cities and the water district, then it would have collectively all of the powers that those entities have in common, and that would include the power of eminent domain.
All right. So it's basically a governing agency, just like the county board supervisors, Rich Crest City Council, any of the other elected agencies that are going to be part of this, all, all the powers, period.
Right. It's, just think of it as those entities acting in concert.
Right. Okay. I said I wouldn't be, even bother with getting into this, but just an observation on this. As proposed, no water company is going to be allowed into. It's only going to be board supervisors, various counties, Rich Crest City Council, Indian Wells Valley Water District. If you think about the representations on this, San Bernardino County residents and Indian County residents are, if they get one vote, they're getting a huge amount of representation in, in the percentage of votes on this GSA because there's very few of them in, that live here, in, in the boundaries of the aquifer. And on, on the other hand, Rich Crest citizens get a huge amount of representation because they're represented both by the Rich Crest City Council and the Indian Wells Valley Water District, who serves the city residents. So, so they get double representation. The poor guys out in the county just get Gleason's vote, and that's it. So I've said this before, usually what I say is pointless.
There are areas in the county that are represented by the water district also, sir.
Well, I'm, I tried to make it clear that the people that live in Rich Crest get a double representation through the water district. I, I think this whole thing is upside down and backwards. If it's going to have all the powers of a government agency, and people don't like it, they don't like what they're doing, they want to change it, they have to go kick out all the Rich Crest City Council members that are on it, kick out all the water district members that are on it, can't do anything about Indian County, San Bernardino County There's ways, I mean, I've just thought about this, not even a whole lot, to, to get representation, equal, fair representation to everybody that's in the boundaries of the aquifer, including the people out in the county, including the guys who, you know, have the, the farms and so forth and so on. I mean, people with some intelligence could figure this out, but everybody just wants to take the easy, easy way. So, you know, I know this ain't going to do any good. I just want to make my observation.
Thank you, sir. So the motion is to, I assume, to, I lost my paper. I'll set it aside, is to approve the executed task order. Is that correct? Do you need a motion or are you?
Absolutely. Are you asking for?
I move that we direct the city manager to execute a task, task order with Lemieux and O'Neill to negotiate a draft joint powers agreement.
Can I ask one question real quick before we move on that? So just wanted to clarify with one thing that was brought up. Any guidelines for negotiation that you need from us will be done in public, then? Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. So, okay. Do we need to have a discussion about, do we need to have a discussion about the budget for the legal before we make this decision? I mean, do we?
If you like, I don't, I, I am anticipating that there will be hours spent between now and maybe early April. I expect I'd come back with something. There's already a draft version of it that we can talk about, that I can bring back for discussion. We're not going to have the laboring oar on the work, so I, I don't expect that I'm going to be spending that many, that many hours on it, but, you know, part of that is whether you want me to attend certain meetings and, or my father.
Right.
And, and so it's a little bit out of my hands, but.
I mean, in my mind, I definitely want you to be doing this. I'm just, I don't know where we sit on our legal budget, though, before we move forward on that. So are we going to, once the city manager makes the task order, are we going to have to approve that again?
No, we would submit bills that would get approved by you guys as they.
That's done as far as I'm concerned. Okay.
I would, I would recommend that this be on the council agenda every meeting so that we can, if necessary, get updates and direction.
I agree.
You're talking about this item?
This item, yes.
Yeah, okay. Or, and I can also do that in my city attorney reports, too, each month, I suppose.
But, but if it takes action, it needs to be an agenda item.
Absolutely. You're not going to need to take action, I, I believe, until we get the actual agreement, right? So up until that point, we're discussing.
I just wanted there so the option to take action is available to us.
Okay.
For, for us to give you direction on, on negotiations, do, does that need to be an action item?
No.
It could just be part of a discussion.
Right. You just direct staff to, by consensus. I mean, again, you're not really taking action until the agreement comes back.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Did we have a second?
Haven't gotten one yet.
I'll second that.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. I have to say something. There was a letter that was submitted by the Union Wells Valley Well Owners Association. It is up there, and he asked it to be part of the discussion. So I, everyone had a copy of the letter, and it's there available also. Now, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I forgot to say it. It's there.
And Madam Mayor, I've had the chance to take a look at the letter, so that's, I've got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
For approve, one absent.
Okay. The next item. I ask this item to be on the agenda, to review and the discussion of the special consulting agreement between the City of Rich Crest and Justin O'Neill. And Justin, I appreciate you being here. The item is on the agenda, and I would appreciate if you'd be willing to talk to us about what you're doing, maybe an overview first, and then discussion, if that's all right with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think I have a PowerPoint presentation. And do I have the right clicker for, is it this one or is it the black one?
Sorry, folks, we're finding, trying to find a little black clicker. I don't see it.
Try not to. Okay.
No black clicker.
So the purpose of the presentation is to go over what projects have been worked on to date, the outcomes of those projects, and then to discuss a reporting framework so that, there were a few things that I'd say were left out of the original contract that dictated what and how I should report and how I should check in, so we're here to remedy that. Next slide. So the original concept, just to go over it, was to hire me on as a sole-source contractor working directly for council and not to be going through staff. At that time, no reporting framework was specified in the scope of work, so exactly how, other than to present and request action from council at full council meetings. I was to attend to projects that are proposed on an individual basis, and we'll go through which individual projects have been proposed, and those projects were not to cover something already covered by staff or vice versa. The only caveat to that is if there is a portion of the work that can be covered by me and can be collaborated with staff, that needed to be proposed to council and approved by the city manager. Next slide. So to date, these are the projects that have been proposed and been approved. The first was the communications platform, the purpose of which was develop a comprehensive strategy for the city to modernize the way it communicated with the public. This project was discontinued with, with little expense. After council approved, there was a meeting with the city manager and IT staff, and there were many overlapping responsibilities. So that sort of effectively took apart the communications strategy that was laid out in the proposal. This actually was the former council, that I let them know by email what that looked like, what that, what that did to the plan, and that the best thing would be to not spend any money on that until there could be sort of a coming together of staff and council. Unfortunately, I think that was right around the election time, and it transferred over, so that needs to be revisited if any action wants to be taken on that project. The next was the Ridge, Ridge Crest Boulevard ribbon cutting. This is a relatively quick project, relatively easy and collaborative with staff. About 50 attendees came, got a lot of local media coverage, just announcing that the street was finished and that people should begin shopping again. This was just before the holiday season, so it came at a good time, although the weather wasn't good that day, if I remember right. Next was the broadband, it's a little rainy. Next was the broadband action team, which has sort of evolved into the technology committee, which we'll be presenting at the next meeting. Originally, this was to assemble a task force of officials and stakeholders to determine an aggregate strategy for broadband deployment. This was prior to the economic development town hall meeting, so it's evolved over time, but the terms laid out in the proposal sort of evolved with it, and it, it could easily be covered by, by serving with the technology committee. So that work has progressed and continued. The last was the quality of life partnership. This was specifically to work with the Navy and the DOD, both NAS and NACWD, particularly on issues of retention, recruitment, and recreation. That, too, has evolved into service on a committee put together by Admiral Moran, and that is the Recreation, Recruitment, and Retention Subcommittee, and put on such projects as the USO Show and the Millennial Focus Group. Next slide. So this is sort of the two fiscal years that my contract is covered to date at a glance. I don't feel like we should, I can come back to this and refer to it if there are any The annual total of the 26,000 in the special projects fund came out to just over 5,000, so there's a lot left over coming in at the close of fiscal year 14, 15. Next slide. And you'll see on this that the allocated budget for special projects was 18,000. This is reflective of the $8,000 cut. To date, $11,000 has been spent, and 6,650 or so remain in the fund for the rest of the fiscal year. Like I said, I can come back to these and refer to them if there are specific questions about time and whatnot spent, but these are reflective of the line items that I include in my invoices, mostly month-to-month, though there have been some months where I lump it all together. Next slide. So to quickly cover the accomplishments of, of these efforts, while the communication platform did not, that work did not affect all the things that, that were in the original proposal, the message was clearly received. We have a new website that was already in the works and was one of the redundant things that was, was stricken, and that conversation has continued, just not necessarily on, with, with my full involvement. The Ridge Crest Boulevard ribbon cutting event was a success. It had about 50 officials, business leaders, and the public, and considerable coverage on local and social media. And as I said, it came just before the holiday season. Next slide. The broadband action team, now the technology committee, will, will be able to expand on, on what's been accomplished there at the next meeting. But in, in short, we've conducted residential and business surveys on both internet use and customer satisfaction to get a snapshot of what's actually happening with, with the internet in Rich Crest and what are people wanting with the internet in Rich Crest. A report came out of those two surveys and have been circulated to contribute to everyone's under. A report came out of those two surveys and have been circulated to contribute to everyone's understanding, including providers and, and stakeholders, about what we are needing and where the public is wanting us to go with our broadband resources. We've provided policy samples for government, I'm sorry, implementation of a general plan policy. We pulled these from Mono County, and it began redlining them and adapting them for our needs, and again, that will be part of the next meeting's presentation. We've developed an aggregate strategy for community-wide broadband upgrades and expansion. This is a broadband community strategy, which will also be a big part of the presentation. And the presentation itself, of course, is coming together, and we're building that. There's other components to this, of course. There've been several meetings and several opportunities to bring in outside resources, meet with consultants with the committee, bring in other elected officials who have successfully implemented broadband projects in their areas. So, there's a lot of information to, to convey, and I'm gonna leave that till the next meeting. Next slide. And this relates to the Quality of Life Cooperative and the outcomes of participating with that Recruitment, Recreation, and Retention Subcommittee. We conducted a Millennial Focus Group to determine areas of improvement. That was, there's a full report, a forty-five page report that can be, that can be seen, and how, how we conducted surveys and facilitated discussion to really get an impression from the millennials working on base, what they're wanting out of the community, what they're wanting out of their experience living here, what they feel is great, what they feel is lacking, and, and what we can do to respond as a community. We also produced the USO Show. That included full coordination and marketing on my part, and that was a huge collaborative effort between the Chamber of Commerce, Historic Society, RACBB, NAS, NACWD, and the National USO Organization, who have said that they're eager to return in a couple of years when they'll be celebrating, I think it's their seventy-fifth anniversary. So, I think there was a lot of great bridges built during that project. And I'd, I'd also point out that when Admiral Moran came and spoke to council with his entourage, the two projects he mentioned were the Millennial Focus Group and the USO Show, as, as significant accomplishments in that collaborative effort. Next slide. So, I wanted to give an impression of a few of the places that we can still go and the things that are still developing under the existing projects, assuming no new ones come along. Communications platform obviously can be addressed again, and we can see what was in the original proposal and what can be amended. I know that there is interest in creating a social media presence. That can be a difficult process, particularly with a consultant, so it's something that we want to explore and, and specific metrics placed on it. Through the technology committee, we will be expanding on all, all number of things that we can do as a community, and, and the involvement of that tech committee and what the city can do. This can include an aggregate deployment strategy, the development and implementation of a communication policy, certainly taking advantage of all the grant resources out there to make connections, particularly for rural communities, and continued education for our local businesses and residences, but especially with an economics development focus, demonstrating to businesses what broadband can do for them. Under the Quality of Life Partnership, I know that, that Navy leadership is eager to get things started again, now under the leadership of Admiral Corey, who I had a chance to speak with, and it looks like he very much wants to continue the things that Admiral Moran had started with regards to this collaborative effort between the community and the base. So, I think this year is gonna hold a lot of, of more great opportunities to interact. We know that marketing resources between the base and the community, there's a lot of limitations there. I think it takes somebody asking a lot of questions and trying to understand where are the opportunities to market more effectively, so that base workforce has an opportunity to take advantage of what our community does have. And of course, continue to work with businesses to communicate to them what is being asked, so getting that word out and, and basically opening up the lines of communication. Next slide. So, the action item out of this presentation is to discuss and decide on a, a framework for reporting. A few of the things that have been discussed, it was with Michael Silander, Mayor Breeden, and Councilmember Acton. And the, the three main areas that we focused on was appointing a council member to direct, more directly supervise, so that some direction, or partial direction, or however that needs to look, can be given outside of full council meetings, so things don't need to be put on hold, and, and opportunities can be taken advantage of more quickly. Determine a committee where the consultant, where I can go and regularly report out on activities and accomplishments, so there's a regular reporting. I don't have a recommendation for that. We discussed some of the committees, and frankly, I'm not sure which one is most appropriate, and, and I think we'll, we'll have to have a discussion with that, and it may need to go back to staff. And lastly, something that was left out of the original contract, but what is the, the schedule for monthly, quarterly, and, and/or annual reporting, as desired by council? So, exactly what the council is wanting and how they're wanting it simply wasn't in the original contract, and we need to decide on. I think that concludes the presentation. Can you go to the next slide? So, thank you very much.
I asked this item to be on the agenda because I was grossly uncomfortable. It appeared that it was supposed to be the mayor's direction, and I don't like that. I don't think it's one person's job to direct activities of anybody, and I wanted it changed, and Michael met with us, and Lori asked to be involved in that meeting, and so the three of us met with, with Jason, or we talked over the phone. And one of the opportunities that I thought was most important is send it to committee. We talked about the org committee, because that's where the, this information can come back to all of us, so we all know what's going on, and understand how the dollars are spent, what the return for investment is, or if not, is there a benefit because we did not receive the return on investment over all the benefit derived? I just was very uncomfortable with it, the way it was, and frankly, hadn't had the opportunity, and was frustrated with the fact that we weren't getting reports, and it wasn't his fault, because frankly, he didn't know what we were supposed to be doing. So, I wanted it set up better. I want to know how it's gonna be organized, how we're gonna do it, and how we can report back to the council and the public, and that seemed the best way to put it through committee.
Well, actually, it specifies it. On the mythology for project approach, page two of three of the exhibit A.
But it had never been done.
Yeah, it hasn't been done. It says, "The city council should discuss and determine the service to be performed by the consultant at a public council meeting. The consultant will therefore submit a concise but detailed monthly narrative to the city council indicating the proposed approach."
It had never been done, and this is why we want it changed.
Included, also supposed to include the budget and how much hourly. I've never seen any of this, so.
The, the budget and the breakdown hourly is included in the proposals ahead of time, and, and the monthly report, and I've asked staff if this satisfies, is included in the invoices. What activities have been performed, and what are the outcomes of those activities are the rightmost item on the invoices.
But we don't, but we don't see the invoices, so therefore, we're not seeing the monthly reports, which is specified right out here, they're supposed to come to council.
And that's why I think if it goes to committee, that's how we can bring it to council. That's the fairest way, and it's the most public way, and so we can determine where we want your efforts to go, how we want it to happen, and you give us direction and opportunities that we may not have thought of, because quite frankly, I'm not an internet guru. I don't know, I'm very pleased with what the broadband committee has been talking about, but I think this is, there's so much more there. I appreciate what you've done. The fiftieth birthday was done extraordinarily well, and I appreciate that work. I know there's been some, there was a letter that was sent that I shared with staff, and, and the counsel from Mr. Bruin commenting on his opinion on the work that you had done, and the potential thereof for more. And I thought it was important that we look at that and understand where he was coming from, and Eric, did you want to speak? Okay. Okay, I think it's, are, are, do you have more questions of Jason right now, or do we want to hear the rest of the story? I sound like, who was that? Whatever, the rest of the story?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't think of his name. I'm too old. I guess I forgot it.
Paul Harvey.
Paul Harvey, thank you.
The young guy knew that, what the heck?
You're not that young.
My dad used to watch Paul Harvey.
You're not that young.
It's just the hairline is deceptive.
Mr. Bruin.
Eric Bruin, 208 Bar Avenue, CEO Desert Golly's Federal Credit Union. I'm pleased to know that the letter was shared. Peggy, I was trying to be very Eric-to-Peggy conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I hope that is not a problem, because I, I tend to be very blunt.
I think that's the best way to be honest.
And, you know, the, the simple fact that is, you know, we're bogging ourselves down. Just give you a simple number from a social media perspective. My business grew seventeen percent last year. Now, my business is the business of my members. Peggy and Jim, I know are members, Mr. Thomas and I, I apologize if I don't know they are, but they know what I've invested in digital technology, in social media, in trying to create a brand, and what that's done for our business. And I have over forty-two hundred people that follow our Facebook page now on a, on a basis. How many follow the City of Ridgecrest?
Blessed few, and it's not kept up like it should be.
How many, so seven hundred and ninety. How many people follow Ridgecrest Vents? A site just meant to be, I'm pissed off and want to complain. Almost two thousand. So, we are not using the channels that we have available to us, and my problem is that consultancy is about allowing innovation and aggressiveness to foster, okay? If you want Mr. O'Neil to use the skills that he has, then let him use the skills that he has. Don't bog it down in fifty different reports, and every conversation known to man, and four different council members come to approve it, and social media is about innovation, about creating ideas. The reason why I believe Mr. O'Neil was so incredibly successful with the fiftieth, and we continue to, to proclaim the success, is because we let him do it independently. He went and said, "I'm gonna build a street fair, everyone will come through me, I'm gonna build this, I'm gonna market this," and what happened? When we add the layers to this thing, we're, we're diluting the, the consultation aspect. And from my perspective, I'm trying to really encourage you, there is an absolute facts in that millennial report. There are absolute facts. Our younger generation does not feel included in the community. Our younger generation feels we're not doing what we should be doing to try and reach out and get information to them. If you don't choose to start course, changing the course now, you will continue to develop a more transient occupancy community, in which people choose to stay here for a few years and leave. Okay? You have an opportunity, you've agreed to, to a contract, he's in place, let it loose. What is the worst thing that happens? Ten people show up instead of the six people that complain?
I agree. We do not sing our song very well. I know you've heard me say this over and over and over again, and we do not. We do not tell our story well, except from here, and we have the people that are here all the time, and God bless you for coming, I appreciate you more than you'll ever know, but, and those people that are watching, and I have no idea how many those are, but I, don't, don't do that, Eric. I want to, I want to see more people involved in this community, and the only way we're gonna do it is make the effort to do so. And without us doing that, it isn't gonna happen. Nobody's gonna come down here and say, "You guys are wonderful," and I'm gonna talk about how great this community is, and I'm gonna explain what's happening, because good things happen, unusual things happen, sometimes even very important things happen. And if you wait to get it out to the media, and thank you for all the media that comes and does that, sometimes it isn't immediate enough, and this is why I want to see us go out and sing our song. So.
You guys asked me to express some opinion, and I, that was simply what I expressed.
That was it, okay. Is there any other public comment? I see there is. Mr. Fuller.
Benny Fuller, the younger generation.
You're not that young.
Well, he's really on all this, all these people.
The beard adds years. So, first thing, I'm just gonna mention this before I get into the rest of it, the, the television channel, not great right now. It's got a lot of noise in the background of it, makes it really hard to tune into. Just, I've noticed that when I've been browsing through the channels, whenever, that rarely happens, because, let's face it, broadcast TV is not what it once was in the era of Netflix and Hulu and Amazon and other streaming entities. So, definitely, I would have someone take, you know, have, have any of you ever tuned into the television site?
Yeah.
It looks awful, like it, it's, it's like this, a display of someone's desktop, and it's got buzzing noises, so I would recommend that be fixed.
I think that's supposed to be music.
Yeah.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
There's music playing, but it's just mostly static. But anyways, yes, definitely, you know, so with, you know, the broadband thing coming up in a couple of weeks, I would recommend that there be a real push to get people in here from the community, both on social media, so I would say, let Justin go at that, you know, whatever he can do, whatever you guys can support him with, I'd say throw it into that. So, do a social media push, do a physical media push in town, you know, get it up on China Lake Boulevard, going in to the base, if you can get some signs up there and be like, "Hey, we're doing this thing." You know, it's, if you really, if you want to address, you know, the people, the younger generation that's not feeling involved, you know, this is a really great opportunity, because it addresses that broadband issue, it will help address economic development, because if you can provide a really solid broadband provider, it's gonna attract other businesses. And that's, the other thing I want to talk about is, a look at, you know, what's being done right now, and I, I say it's not enough, at least, you know, I don't think Justin necessarily on his own can like do all the stuff, I'd say, you know, maybe, you know, kick in some more support, so we can do more, but I think the problem we're looking at is right now, the town is completely dependent on the base, and I, I think that the people we just hired are starting to realize that, and so, me, as being part of that younger generation, looking at the, you know, housing market, seeing that, you know, you don't have a lot of great floor plans around, and I'm like, well, there's really nothing to buy that's new, because there's no housing development underway, really, that's like in an affordable place, like, there's nowhere I can go to get like a new starter home that would have a better layout for me, and so I look at that, and it's a very frustrating housing market, so you're looking at that, but who's gonna develop if the only people that are here are the people on base? So, really, there needs to be a focus, I think, put on not just keeping the millennials on base happy, because they're not really your average millennials either. Most of them came with families and girlfriends, at least the ones that I know. So, it's not your, your average single young millennial that's just out spending all his money, eating out, because first of all, there's not a lot of place to go to eat out here in the first, you know, in the first place, but, so it's, it's gonna be, we need to see how we can attract more businesses and put much more emphasis onto that, and I think give Justin the support he needs to pursue those avenues, and see really, you know, what can we do to get other people here that don't necessarily just support the base effort? You know, can we get, you know, other tech companies, can we get, you know, you know, manufacturing, you know, something, what else can we bring in to diversify the market in terms of employment opportunities, and help also keep some of the bright young people from Ridgecrest in, because I look around, I notice that a lot of the, I assume that there are people that grew up in Ridgecrest and, you know, do well, but most of them don't seem to stick around. There's a few on base, but for the most part, a lot of people came from other areas, and it seems like the young talent has gone elsewhere, at least locally on talent. So, now coming in as, you know, the, the young single guy, you know, I look around and I say, "Well, there's no other young single people," just at all, like, so all my friends have kids and girlfriends and wives, I'm just like, "Hi." So, you know, we, we also need to focus on retention of the youth in this town, and bringing in more youth to help, you know, just kind of grow that community, and then, you know, if you really want to retain people, you gotta have people with a like-minded scenario so they can hang out with, because while I do, you know, really enjoy the company of my friends, you know, they're not gonna be going out and doing the kinds of things that single people do, and it's a little, you know, disheartening, I guess, in that regard, that I, there's not really a clear avenue where I'd go to. that there's not really a clear avenue where I'd go to do these kinds of things. So I guess those are my two cents.
I think it's been, I've heard it said often, "It's a great place to raise a family. It's not a great place to date."
It's not, yeah, if you already have a family starting, it's fine. But yeah, like I said, the single person here, I came in and there's really no one to date, and there's no other, like, there's very few other single people here for me to even, it seems like to hang out with. You know, meeting people on base, it's, to an extent, it's not that hard. But, you know, we're all busy. We're all doing different things. You know, they got us all spread out different places. So it's not, the interaction is not as easy as you might think on the outside. So, you know, the people I hang out with are the people I met on my first day, for the most part. So there's not, what we need to really focus on is figuring out how, in this town, we can foster an environment where people can come together more easily and meet. And, you know, mingle and get to know each other because I think right now that's what's really lacking is, you know, we have these newcomers from outside. They don't really know how to get in yet, but it's all like really family-oriented. And, you know, these people with these young babies, you know, they're not ready to go out and try all that. And, you know, the single people are like, "Well, why did I go to that?" You know, there's not going to be a single people there. It's just going to be my bosses and the kids. Or, you know, grandkids, actually, yeah, for being honest.
Okay.
But, yeah, so it's, you know, I would say give Justin the support he needs to figure out, you know, if he needs to hire more people or just have a bigger budget, you know. But whatever needs to be done to, you know, kind of get the focus on bringing these activities and keep people in. Like I said, you know, these is not your average millennials, but the ones that you're worried about retaining are the ones that are, you know, worried about these kinds of things. You know, just the ability to go and be out in the community without having to have a family and feel like you're part of it. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. I got to say something personal to you. I really appreciate you being here all the time. You come, you speak. There's a lot of others that are, that come and speak all the time. But the fact that you're not my age, old, you are here, you care enough, and you say it, and some of the millennials were saying they don't even know where City Council meets.
Yeah, this actually was told me.
You know what? You can tell them. So we're going to help get that out. So thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
And Justin, I guess, need any help, at least with the next meeting? This seems like it would be a really good one to try and get people into it. You know, let me know if there's anything I can do to help you out with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Warren.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Breeden. Tina Warren, Chairwoman, Chamber of Commerce. I had the pleasure of working with Justin on the millennial focus group. And I have to say, Justin, he executed the effort, organized it, did the marketing, got probably about sixty young individuals there. And I also had the pleasure of assisting Justin during the event. And he was instrumental in engaging them, but also engaging them in such a way where he did not shut them down. Because after all, we're there to gather information and not judge. And he did an excellent job at that. He allowed them to speak and share. And the final product was the results of the survey. Very well-written, very well-organized. It was excellent, and it was an excellent experience, too. We are just so very fortunate. I mean, these young individuals in this room, they have great jobs. They're nice young men and women, you know, they're not thugs. They're great people. So it was a great experience. But most of all, the one thing about, I think the most important thing, and I guess we're going to go back to age again, is Justin, he is of a different generation. And I think that it is of utmost importance for us to be influenced by that and learn off of each other. You know, we have been hiring a lot of younger individuals at our place of business, and it's about helping each other, sharing, and also mentoring them. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitnick.
Thank you. First thing I would like to bring up is that, I'm glad, Mr. Mauer, you brought up that one paragraph about how the project should be brought to the City Council for approval. Because I was wondering for myself, the three new council members here, how much they knew about what was going on. And I know the mayor and I have had discussions about it. And there was one event, and I asked the mayor, "Who's in charge of this thing?" And she couldn't answer. And I don't mean that as a negative towards you, Mayor.
Well, because there wasn't one person, but yes.
Okay.
I know what you're saying.
But when I was trying to find out, okay, who's making decisions on this project that Mr. O'Neill is helping to coordinate, I couldn't find out who. Nobody could tell me who's making the decisions on a project, okay? And if he's working for you folks, then when I come to you, oh, here's the clicker, by the way. I would expect that somebody up there would be able to answer that question, or else the city manager. And because of that, I had no answer. Now, he's brought it up that maybe we need to reassess this, how is it controlled? And somebody has to be out front. But I really think that we, the council, since there's three new ones on here, you should review all three, these projects that he's working on with the last council assigned him to, and make sure that he's going the direction that you would like him to go. The three new people especially, Mr. Sanders and Laurie Acton are carryovers. But it wouldn't hurt to review the goals of the project that he's working on and make sure he's going the direction that you would like him to go. The other thing I would like to bring up, being a baby boomer, I certainly agree one-hundred percent that we have to focus and for our millennials and include them and get them more involved in the city. Absolutely. But the same token, we can't forget about me. The baby boomers and the forty pluses and the fifty pluses, okay? The project should include everybody. Outreach should be to everybody. Do you think that way?
You know, I have to admit, at last year's Ridgecrest Economic Conference, I found out that I'm a pre-baby boomer.
But anyway, so we do have, we do have to get on Facebook, and we do have to do a lot of things that the millennials did. I mean, I got to take a minute and tell a story, but I had a millennial in my store about a month ago, and he ordered a gun, and it was sitting on the counter. And it didn't match what he had on his phone. And he was showing me, "Sir, this doesn't match what's on my phone." And I said, "Sir, what's in the box? Is that what you ordered?" "Yes." "Is it exactly what you wanted?" "Yes." "But it doesn't match what's on my phone." This really happened. And I said, "Okay, forget the phone. There's the product. That's what you wanted." He actually went outside and called the manufacturer and asked them why their website wasn't current. Okay? My only point of that is, I fully recognize how our younger generation is really wrapped into the internet and Facebook and everything else. And we need to focus in that area. But we can't forget the rest of the population that you serve.
I don't think anybody is wishing to do that, Tom. I think that this is the initial, was what the past councils have asked him to do.
I understand.
That we have, but that doesn't mean that we have abdicated our responsibility here. We recognize that all of us have to be involved. And that's why I think that USO event was a true, there was more, there was more people my age there than there were young people, even though they were, I mean, I saw Admiral Moran and Scott O'Neill sitting up in the first two seats the whole entire six hours that they were there, had a good time. Many of us did. We're all sitting out, and some sitting in the sun and waiting for the rain because there's huge clouds coming over. But you know what? There was more old people than young people. So we're not abdicating our responsibility to the, I'm sixty-nine. To us old folks, we're making sure that everybody feels wanted, needed, and provide opportunity for.
And that's Marketing 101.
It is.
If we took it in college, we all know what Marketing 101 is. You target your audience and go after it. The USO function was definitely, well, it'd be nice to have the young people there.
There were them.
And there were, but it was focused more on the people from the World War II and Korean era, et cetera, and Vietnam. So that was the target, that was really the target audience. Anyway, my point is that I would encourage you folks to, you know, review the projects that he has ongoing and make sure that they're going the direction as you understand them and that you do understand them, and then he's going the direction you would like it to go. And I hope that in the future, that when we, the public can ask a question of, "Who's in charge?", we get an answer.
The council. Thank you.
Before you step in, David, I actually have a question raised by what Mr. Whitnick asked regarding my participation on committees and how that works as a function of my contract. So to use the example of the USO Show, I attended these committees. I brought the USO Show as a project to the council. The council approved the budget and the plan for it. I went back to the USO Show Committee, so we got circles and circles here, and the USO Show Committee appointed me in charge of taking care of that event, the marketing campaign for it, and a few other factors with pieces parceled out to RACDB, the Chamber of Commerce, and some of the other participating or collaborative groups. So from my standpoint, and I want to know if I'm wrong about this, this was an event that I was charged with figuring out the marketing campaign, exactly how that's to function, and figuring out the logistics for the event itself. And I'll even say that at that committee meeting, I reluctantly took that seat because everybody kept saying, "We wanted the USO Show to happen." But every time somebody said, "All right, who's going to lead the charge?", everybody backed away from the table. So I'm curious how it works because we're in a similar situation. Obviously, the USO Show is completed, but we're in a similar situation with the Retention, Recruitment, Recreation Subcommittee and the Technology Committee, both of which I serve as a function of my contract with the city. So I guess my question is, what are the limitations to my being there as a representative of the city or in execution of my contract with the city?
Are you sitting, you're not sitting on the committee. You're reporting to the committee?
No, I am sitting on the committee.
Not the Org Committee.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm sitting on the Technology Committee, which is, you know, the Town Hall. And I'm sitting on the committee with base leaders.
There's a bunch of us that are on that committee. There's about thirty of us.
I think that's why he needs to report to a committee here.
I agree.
Because we're the one that fund you.
Right.
And we don't know how much we're funding you unless we get monthly reports. And you've been turning the monthly reports into staff. Staff hasn't been sharing them with council, and really, they should be shared with council.
And I was never aware that that didn't cross that line.
So, yeah, we've got one more public comment. But I think where the mayor wanted to go is assign this to a committee where we'd expect you to show up at that committee. We meet once a month, but we haven't met in three months for various reasons. But the City Org Committee would make sense for that.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
Did you need an answer from?
Well, that would certainly be appropriate under the contract. The City Council would sort of delegate it to the committee, and then the committee would give you your instructions, I guess.
And then would report back to the full council.
And then you could report back to the full council. Which is not to say you did it wrong before. It's possible that the committee could delegate to yet another committee. There's probably an issue, though, about, not a legal issue, but just sort of a policy issue about having you sit on the committee that's also deciding the scope of your services.
Well, he would be a sitting member of the committee.
No, I think he, I understand that's not your intent. I thought I heard you say that that's what had happened in this case, but maybe I misunderstood.
Or the other committee, not the city.
It seems like, what I'm getting, hearing from the City Council on it, would be better practice to make sure that his authority is not delegated to the committee that you're also sitting on.
No. And to be clear, any, anything included in the work that I've done has been presented to council in a separate proposal of what exactly I'm going to be doing for a specific project. So there was never another committee. Now, some of those items have been relatively broad, but it sounds like we can use this City Org Committee or something similar to whittle that down. But if the direction from council is, go work with the base on retention, recruitment, and recreation, then my feeling is, okay, I can now work within this Subcommittee, and we can identify objectives that we can identify. And I've been including what we do and what we've decided. And I'll also say, with those two committees in particular, I believe you're on all those emails. So there hasn't been a total separation. And this will certainly make it more concrete when and how I enumerate everything that's happening. But I think I have a clear answer.
And it's got to be worked within the budget.
Of course. Nothing ever exceeds the twenty-six and now eighteen thousand that was allowed.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. You might say I'm representing the real old people. Since in a couple of months, I'll be eighty-five. The, Mr. Bruin made a good suggestion, which I tend to agree with mostly, in that let the expert do what he does expertly and get off his back. And Justin has been doing a good job on the Technology Committee, whatever we're going to call it these days. But Mr. Bruin also asked, "Well, how many people follow this and how many people follow that?" And I'll tell you right now that I don't follow any of them because I see the way social media is set up has nothing more than a gossip mill. Now, before you jump to conclusions here and say, "I'm completely against it", no, that's not the case. It needs to be structured differently. It has good aspects, as Tom kind of pointed out here in his instance. But for the government, the city, or any government entity to actually get deeply involved in social media, I think is wrong. These entities need to have structure and guidelines. And I'm sure that none of you sitting up there would want to be clicking on a hundred contacts a day complaining about something or other. That's not the way you need to set it up. You need to just set it up so that you can send out information perhaps, but you don't have to take it back and answer it. I hope I'm making myself clear on that. This other gentleman, the young generation, what is that, what do you call himself? It was up here. I would just like to say that you have discovered what I discovered forty-some years ago, that this town is heavily dependent on the base. And I have been trying ever since, and I keep thinking, "Well, we're almost there. We're almost there." But we have to, if you recognize that, then you need to start looking at what you can do to help change it. Because there are some of us old people in here that would like to change that structure as well. And Mrs. Warren mentioned, too, that I don't like this millennial thing. They're a younger generation. I don't know where these terms come up, but, well, I do tend to blame Dan Clark sometimes, but he's not here to defend himself. Anyway, there is a lot, too, that the younger generation can learn from the older generations if they just come and seek it. And, excuse me. Many people come to work and that's what they want to do, and that's fine. But, and they've never really been concerned about what's happening with the governing bodies that are surrounding them. And I don't know if that's part of the education system or what. I kind of suspect maybe it is. Because I learned in high school about civics 101 and this and that and the other thing. And that's how I got involved and found out that, hey, yes, if I'm going to... thing, and that's how I got involved and found out that, hey, yes, if I'm going to depend on my government to do something, I better make sure that I'm involved and they can, they actually know how I feel about what they're doing. So I encourage, and, and I'm glad that we've, we've got a lot more attendance around here lately, but I encourage some of these younger generations, if you don't have anything other to do, come down here and beat up on these guys. Thank you.
Gee, thanks, Dave.
Sure.
Make it short.
I'll be very short. Uh, I just want to point out three things. Mr. Murray, in regards to the idea for our committee, it's a great idea. Problem is that if you're dark for three months, it's a useless idea.
Well, we were dark because of holidays.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying for any amount of time. Social media and, and our generation expects instant and immediate information and gratification. Any delay of time that you're waiting around to get those answers, you're creating a whole lot of challenges. Just understand that it happens literally as fast as within this device.
I think, I think the Iowa caucus was a good example.
A perfect example. And, and then, and then what I wanted to just, uh, you know.
But we're, we're not saying you can't do anything, we're just wanting to report.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, I've been on the council for over a year and I think we've talked twice.
Yeah, I was meaning more, more direction, direction versus reporting. Reporting is, is a, they're two different problems. The other one is, there was a comment, uh, Mr. Matthews made about, again, a hundred comments on this and how it's gossip and the social media aspects. Well, yeah, that's exactly what we want. And guess what? If I got a hundred comments on here, that's ten times the people here. That's exactly what you want. You want participation in your government and if you want it, then use the channel that they want to talk to you on. Don't expect them to come to the channel you want them to go to. Put it on the channel they're going to talk on. I mean, I, I don't know how to, this is, this is the backwards thinking process of we're not selling it to the way they were expecting to get it, but we're upset that they're not buying it.
I don't think anybody disus-
I just, I'm just giving you another way to look at the, the whole problem is, let somebody loose with the direction and then go from there. Apologize, I ain't getting home to a four-year-old. Have a wonderful night.
All right. Thank you. Put that on your, your social media, would you please?
I will.
Thank you.
Nine, nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-three views from Mr. Myers' plan.
Thank you.
I'm going to like it, Eric.
Okay, Mr. Neal.
Uh, okay, so I take it this is like a, a review of the consultant, like his performance, what he's done and so forth, what you want to go forward with. Is that, oh, I'm sorry, I'll fix that. So I did hear a comment, uh, there had been no reports to the council. Is that actually true? I mean, no reports to the council since his council been in place?
That is not true.
He, he's come to us with projects, but we haven't gotten a monthly report.
No monthly reports at all, right?
I, I think when, when we first started off, he was doing monthly reports, weren't you? I mean, the first year of your contract, I think.
Like I said, when I started, the question I asked was actually about another consultant that the city had, is it how do they usually, I like to just mimic them because they've been around for a while. Um, and I asked, how exactly do I talk through all the things that I've worked on, aside from, uh, email threads when we're participating in the same committee or appearances before council? And I was told that including a detail on the invoice was satisfactory. It's not until now that I didn't realize those things are never seen by you. I thought that this was, since it is a, a special contract, that those do get forward along, that some member of council or hopefully all members of council. So that, that is exactly a misunderstanding that needs to get corrected and a, a better framework that achieves what's in the contract.
You assumed correctly, it just didn't happen.
Yeah. So he has been giving a monthly report every month. Is that inaccurate?
Correct.
In, in the statement, or in the invoice, we just haven't been getting it on our end.
There's a handful of months where it was aggregated. I mean, just in total honesty, there's a couple of months where I didn't invoice because there wasn't a lot of activity. When I did, details included.
So, so a, a point surrounding that issue, then, this position, you're supposed to be working for the council and you're not supposed to be getting direction from staff, as I recall. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But in this instance-
As I read the contract.
He's not performing, but he's using that as an excuse that he got direction from staff, which he was not supposed to be getting in the first place, as a reason for not performing. I, I, I fail to understand where the performance is here. Now, you're all grinning over there, go ahead and say what you have to say.
I, I think that's a pretty inaccurate statement.
Well, was he not, was he or was he not supposed to be working directly for the council and not getting-
He is.
-direction for sta- from staff?
He asked for advice, he got it.
From who?
He, he, he chose-
The staff?
He, excuse me, he chose to report how he wanted to. The fact that none of us really took issue with that is, is our problem.
Did anybody know about that at all?
In the beginning, the first couple of months I was on council, I got an invoice from Ricka, I believe, that said, this is being done and it was like a couple of sentences with a total. And not knowing what was going on, I said, I, I'm really uncomfortable with this. Am I supposed to okay this? And she said, that is what was be, was done in the past. I don't like that. I said, I can't, I don't like dealing with it this way. It's not fair, it's not right. And so this is what this has evolved into over months and months of discussion. And I haven't seen an invoice in probably, I don't want to exaggerate too many, maybe six months.
Okay. There you go.
So we're fixing it now. So don't criticize us for fixing it. Criticize us for not fixing it in the past.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to address problems that are presenting themselves here.
I agree.
Okay? When we have reviews of performance, that's what you're supposed to do. Now, if staff messed up, stepped out of their place and we've given your, your consultant direction, then at least you should make sure they understand, because this is the only position like this in the city, period. The only person who's supposed to work directly, directly are you guys. The city manager complained loudly about this. He didn't like the idea and he said, I'm not interacting, I'm not directing, you know, I'm not telling this guy what to do. He's the council's employee and yet for a long time, what you're supposed to be getting from him didn't get to you for whatever reason. So we can do this, okay? Oh, with staff, oh, we messed up. If you didn't even see those staff reports with those invoices for six months, then there's some gross negligence somewhere.
But there isn't a report. There isn't a report.
No report?
You say you spent two dollars and eighty-five cents on paper products to do ABC.
This is all you get?
Am I-
No, that's not entirely-
An accounting of expenditures?
That's not entirely accurate. It's not just an expense report.
No, we're talking about the expense report that, that went to that. We're not talking about your reports because we've got a lot of reports.
I thought you said you didn't get any for six months. I thought you said you didn't get any for six months.
Oh, I think we're, yeah.
No, we're talking about two different things.
Reports or invoices?
Invoices.
Well, that wasn't what was spelled out. What's spelled out in contract, invoices or reports of activity to the council directly? What was, what's in the contract? That's the problem here. I see failure to perform according to the terms of the contract coming right out. I mean, I didn't even know this. I just hear it, you know, it's brought out in front of everybody, okay?
Well, that's why I asked it to be on the agenda, so we could discuss it and see where we wanted to go.
All right, fine. Then I assume you'll fix that and he will actually bring you monthly reports like he's supposed to do. You might want to consider, you know, why this failure occurred and, you know, the, the other thing, well, just, let's just drop that one. Uh, I said this before and I'm used to saying things over and over again, uh, there's a lot of duplication of effort in this contract. There's economic development duplication of effort. There's, uh, now I see tonight, you know, we're, we're paying someone to help the base try to improve their recruitment and retention. We're, we're spending our citizens' money to help this hugely funded Navy entity right up the road do their HR work. And, and I don't even know when that got thrown in the mix at all. Uh, you know, and, and this economic development stuff, I complained from the very first because we're paying a gentleman over there a pretty nice salary to do that, but yet we had to pay somebody else extra to do more of that, right? You know, it's, it's like, really? You know, are we already spending enough on that? So, you know, I, I actually just have to honestly question why we need this at all? You know, twenty-six thousand is the law. Now, it's now here, it's eighteen. Eighteen's even less, but you know what? It's as much crappy roads as we got in this town. It could fix an intersection or something else instead of paying for duplication of effort down here. Uh, so that's, I, I can see I'm, I'm getting glassy eyes here, so I'll be done.
Well, remember, we have a budget coming up and that will be addressed in our budget. That's clearly, and that's in a couple of more months.
I hope you'll remember this at that time.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Fuller again. Uh, so just on the note of the whole instantaneous gratification that my generation kind of does. Um, so I know, uh, the president, uh, has done this one, some of the, you know, CNN whatever, but they, you know, people can watch, uh, live stream and tweet in, you know, people, less and less, uh, from the TV, so maybe if we could livestream all these things. Are, are these, uh, livestreamed on the internet or just broadcast on a TV?
Over the city's website, you can livestream.
Okay. So we might want to look into setting up a platform where we, you know, just make sure that, uh, the word is out, that this can be livestreamed and then people can maybe tweet or Facebook in or something, try and get some comments. We have someone who could, you know, look through these, you know, if people, because, uh, you know, on the, on the note of people aren't necessarily coming here, you know, and, you know, he said, you know, nothing better to do. Uh, well, if you're my age and like I said, a lot of these guys have families, you know, generally being home with your two and, two-year-old and your newborn might be considered something , uh, better to do. But if, if you, if you provide them a way to access what's going on here, but also be able to provide some input, you know, maybe, you know, just some, if someone could look through what's coming in on the other end, you know, tweets, Facebook, some sort of livestream service, whatever, have you, um, and then what's, you know, deemed appropriate and relevant to what's going on, maybe it can be brought up and, you know, quickly addressed. Um, might be something to look into. Um, also, I don't know, maybe, this is just a quick idea, maybe put, uh, some food items in the back if you want to try and attract at least some people in, because I know that for me, that's the hard thing is I come straight from, I go to work and then I go to the gym and then I come here and then I go home and between the time I leave here and the time I need to get to bed around ten o'clock, I have to eat and shower and do all my winding down for the day, which is a little difficult. Uh, now on, you know, the relevancy of Justin and what he's doing, uh, the fact of the matter is that Justin is being paid for because the city is facing problems with, you know, the retention of these young people. That, and that's the pro- it's, it's the base can't just come in and tell the city, oh, you need to do this stuff so our, you know, young guys stay here. Uh, you can only offer so much in terms of what you can provide on base with work and benefits, because the benefits packages aren't what they were. Um, you know, it, you can only do so much on that end, so what they're trying to accomplish here is providing an avenue for the city to communicate, you know, how to, you know, help keep these people not just for the work on base. It's, it's not, the HR work is, is more than just, you know, we're not just working for Nav Air, we, we live here too. We want to be part of that community. That is why they pay Justin. You know, it's, it's helping to bring these young people in, make them part of the community and see how we can not only incorporate them, but grow Ridge Crest. So it's, I know you, you seem to think that it's, you know, that we're just throwing money away at him, but I say it's money well spent. So, uh, I'd just like to say that in your defense and with that, I'll wrap up.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Al Hury, eleven twenty-eight, Wendy Lynn. To be quite honest, a lot of this, uh, I, I have some concerns with. Um, I was just talking to Mr. Bruin and he talked about, uh, one thing, uh, an event page or website. And the first thing came to my mind, why would the city have Mr. O'Neill do that when they're already paying RACVB money to do that kind of thing? And we have a Chamber of Commerce that has a website that puts the events on there.
The hoteliers pay the RACVB.
I beg your pardon?
The hoteliers and the, and the, they, they, uh, they fund the TOT and the TID.
So we're not playing, paying RACVB any money anymore?
Well, the money comes through the city, but it is only, Ty, do you want to address that? The money comes to, from the TID to the city, to the TID, but is not city's money.
It's a pass-through.
It's a pass-through, thank you.
So the hotels are paying more than the TOT to fund?
That's the first I've ever heard of that.
They vote, they, they, when they formed, they, they were paying the city, uh, okay, I'm, I may have this incorrect.
Okay, uh, uh, be that as it may.
One percent, now it's two percent. They, they charge themselves extra dollars to be able to support the RACVB to the tourist improvement district to get more people in.
Do we still give money to the chamber?
I don't know where we are with that.
No, we don't. And we did give, we did give eight thousand dollars to the RACVB for the, um, Petri-Gliff Festival.
My, my, my point being though, I guess, is the RAC, RACVB is supposed to be doing that and the chamber does it. It, it's like a duplication of effort and we're going to pay money to have that done? It just-
That is an issue that will come up in the budget. It is. I mean, the budget is the budget and we have to deal with that.
As tight as the city's budget is, I, I just, I don't know, I'd wrestle with that one.
I, I understand.
And that's just one thing that, that came to mind as I was sitting there listening. And, and, and a lot of this, uh, again, happens in social media and we have somebody out there, nothing against Mr. O'Neill, making comments that could come back to bite the city on, on social media. It's not a government entity.
I think-
Part of the government that's speaking on, on the social media.
I think when you post things about things that are happening, what's going on that are facts, the only time that's going to come back and bite you, if you are responding in a manner that is other than a factually driven manner, like what time is it? How is it going to be? What does it cost? How do you do that? How do you come to the Petri-Gliff Festival? How do you come to whatever? You know, those are questions. Are they going to be answered every day? I don't know that.
Well, I, I, I don't participate in social media, but my understanding is people communicate back and forth on that.
Not on all sites.
Some of them. Okay. So that, you know, you have somebody-
I mean, that's going to be, you have to come to New York.
-ask a question or complain and somebody responds, that's, that's my concern.
Michelle Vance, who is the Economic Development Director in Tehachapi, shared with me one time that her, she spends a good portion of her day, which everybody knows how well, maybe you don't, but Tehachapi is doing a wonderful job in bringing people in their bike fundo or whatever it is that they got eight thousand people in a few weekends ago because it is just purported to do that through the social media. She responds to, is the road closed? Now, those kind of things is one way of doing it. The other way of doing it is presenting facts. Not all of them are the same, Al.
Yeah. And, and then I guess the only other thing I would like to bring up, and I may have mentioned it to some of you already, um, during the USO event when it was being planned and designed and, uh, speaking as a, a interviewer on, on TV, I was able to get ahold of the USO, I was able to talk to RACVB, was unable to talk to anybody from the Navy, and I contacted Mr. O'Neill and didn't get any responses from him, thinking that he was the media interface for the city council. And he, he finally did get ahold of me, but it, by that time, uh, it was pretty much too far down the road.
No, sir, that's not correct. You, I spoke with, uh, Tex Hoppus on your show and it wasn't too far down the road. We were like two weeks, if I recall, in front of it. I spoke, I remember.
Well, when I spoke to him, if, if I'm not mistaken, Justin told me that he didn't have any information that he could give out, nothing had been nailed down at that time.
There was a delay in responding to your call and it was a, it, well, but hold on, it was a delay due to the fact that we were, for the first time and for the purpose of my contract, I mean, this is specifically what we were trying to do, was working collaboration with the base. And the base had a lot of concerns and greater limitations on how they release press releases and that sort of thing. The nature of the USO show was a collaborative effort, so things were pieced out. I was- with the base. And the base had a lot of concerns and greater limitations on how they released press releases and that sort of thing. The nature of the USO show was a collaborative effort, so things were pieced out. I was also responsible for laying out an entire marketing strategy. And with full respect for what you do, what I had laid out calendar-wise, just in the timeline of it, you'd contacted me something a month or a month and a half prior. I was needing to hand that element off to the base so that they could decide with their PAO office exactly how they wanted to, to make this happen. And that's precisely what I did. And the reason, and, and I made it very clear because I'd sent one message, and it seemed to go a little unheeded, or things were happening, and, and it got overlooked. I'm really not sure. I sent another one saying very deliberately and specifically, we've been asked to participate on this. It is a good opportunity for us to present a united face, and I'm asking now very specifically, and I called out the, the individuals who I thought should participate, and I handed it off to Peggy Tex, I believe the skipper was a part of that, Peggy Schoeff as his PAO. So, I fully appreciate why you're saying that, because there wasn't an enormous amount of communication here, and I think I did have two messages from you before I contacted you back. But I don't want you to feel, and I, I want to make it clear, you weren't forgotten, and you remained in the strategy, which is precisely why they were on your show. So, I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I will do better to communicate those plans in the future. But to be honest with you, with a show like that, when it's one person doing that work and elements, I mean, there was a lot of collaborative effort, but sometimes responding to every phone call, asking a question is just not possible. And so, I was trying to fit it in, in the, the manner that our agreed-upon media strategy laid it out.
We are getting a little off-topic here, though.
Yeah, yeah.
We are. I, I think, I think if, if you have concerns, talk to Justin, come to the committee, the org meeting, and, and voice those concerns.
All right, thank you.
But to now, I appreciate, though, you coming up and saying what you said. Helps us know. Is there any other public comment?
Can I address one thing, and I will try to be extremely brief?
See, I think we beat this thing to death, first of all.
I'm a little, the only thing I'm concerned with is, is public expectation regarding the position, because we're bringing up social media a lot, and, and I think as, as it's been admitted, there's a lot of education left on social media and how that works. But I want to make it clear, because I, I feel like I'm slowly becoming this symbol of the new pushing out the old, and that's far from my intent and far from the purpose of this work. We're trying to create a, a community that, that represents itself in a more diverse way, that includes millennials that aren't being represented or aren't participatory right now. And we're trying to find the opportunities to do that. My background and my education is entirely about creating spaces and creating experiences within those spaces. And my appeal to Ridgecrest, and the reason for this position, is that we are lacking those spaces, and we are lacking those experiences, which actually, that, that is the content behind social media. So, I'd say it is one thing to, to want to get on Facebook, to want to use Twitter, to want to use a, a well-designed website. But I'd say even more importantly, and the focus of my position so far, has been that we need to create the things that excite people. We need to create the things that invite people in, that invite them to participate. And then, we need to create the mechanism that they can run with that on their own social media. It's the difference between inbound and outbound marketing, and we can go into a whole thing about that. But I, I just want to make it clear, that's my goal here, is not to advocate more for millennials than any other group. It's actually to see these integrated, because we know through any number of research studies that a balanced community represents all its generations, and there is communication between them. So, I agree with you, Dave. We need to create the space where the millennials come to the boomers and the civics, and vice versa.
Tina?
Yes, just one thing to add is, there is no way that, for instance, the fiftieth could have been done the way it was done without that kind of help. I mean, there's no way that the Chamber has the staffing or the resources of this time to put something like that on. And in regards to the talks with the base and what we're doing with the base, it is very important to get the word out about what is going on with these new folks coming to town, and, and what they'd like to see, and what's important to them. I mean, we all need to work together to create a great community and to grow together. Thank you.
Thank you. So, unless anybody else has any other comments, we'd like this to go to the org committee. Does anybody have any problem with that? Do we need a vote on that? Just send it to org?
I think that's a good idea.
I have some, some comments on that. I mean, so, in terms of, well, okay, let me, let me back up a little bit. I, I think one of the serious drawbacks that I've seen with this arrangement is that you have five bosses, right? I mean, it, it's, it's very difficult, like Eric said, to, to take direction from a group that only meets in, in very formal settings like this, and when things happen that way. I don't know the best way to address that, and I, I want to have a discussion about that, because I'm not sure that sending it to a committee is going to be the best way either, because the committee meets less often than we meet here as a full council. So, in my mind, that, that means he would have opportunity to get direction even less frequently, and not from the whole body either.
Do you have a suggestion?
Well, I don't. I want to talk about it, because I, I don't really know what the solution is.
I don't think necessarily we're going to have to give him direction all the time. I think the council has given him direction on certain projects. He will just be reporting on the status and, and where we are on those projects to the, to the committee.
So, just be informational reporting, so...
I think Justin was in the contract. Which is, which is more than what we've been getting.
Right. No, I'm, I'm good with that.
But if, but if, if the city org committee wants him to look at another project, that's going to need to come to the council for approval, I think. I don't think...
I agree.
Okay, so, all new projects would still be coming to the council?
All new projects would still have to come to the council.
Okay.
And, and unfortunately, he works for the council. There's five of us.
Right.
Today, there's four, but...
Yeah.
How about more minuscule adjustments, granular adjustments to an ongoing project? Will the committee that I report to be able to give me smaller direction? I mean, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how to represent it.
We would, I think, I think what I have to handle on a case-by-case basis. Now, the committee is made up of four people. It's made up of two city council members and two planning commissioners. There's, there's four people there, and generally, we operate by consensus, so...
Okay.
We can try it for a couple of months and see how it works. The next, by the way, the next meeting is the twenty-fourth at five o'clock.
So, I'm, I'm thinking, and I, I want to get legal opinion on this, because I don't want to violate any Brown Act violations here. If, if Justin gets approved for a project, right, and, and, and we, we set aside funding for that, that project, as we, we currently do, would, would he then, for, you know, fine-tuning instructions, would it be okay for him to email the council and say, just don't reply all, but what are your thoughts on, on this? I mean, because I want, I want to find a way to get him quick instruction on, on things like that.
Yeah, that would probably, that'd be a Brown Act problem, because he's essentially inviting a response out of the view of the public. If you want to have a quick response, it seems like you could delegate that, those decisions to the committee, and the committees could meet more often.
Right.
And, and the committee subjects the Brown Act, so it's open.
Right, so you could, they could do it at the Brown, as a Brown Act notice meeting. Remember, meetings can be called with relatively short, you know, twenty-four-hour notice, special meeting, and, you know, that might be a solution.
Okay. Well, maybe, and maybe that is a solution. I mean, the last, I mean, to me, this whole thing is about reaching out to, to a, a sector of the population that's not really, we're not reaching, right? So, it's all about transparency and, and reaching out and communicating with people in the community that's, that's not getting our message. So, I don't want to, I don't want to be in that process violating anything that would, like the Brown Act, that's, you know, counter to that, so...
Do we need a motion?
Can we just give direction, or do we need a motion?
You're just essentially talking about scheduling something for a committee meeting, so that it doesn't require a motion, just direct staff to set it up for the next agenda.
For clarity, it sounds like I also need to, when I develop my invoices, I can also say, I can include the council in my invoices, and just a disclaimer saying, don't reply all.
Or at least bring it to the committee, and the committee can report.
And I can include a separate breakout report of those details with, with greater description. It sounds like that's something that, that council also wants, that would better fit the reporting criteria. So, that can happen.
I think it'd be...
So, I guess we need to make sure that his report gets put on the committee agenda. Rachel, can you handle that? Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comments on that...
Dave, you just thought it was going to be a short meeting.
Yeah, Lord. Okay. The ordinances. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Ridgecrest amending the Ridgecrest municipal code as it relates to water-efficient landscape. Mr. Lemieux.
Yeah, this wasn't the meeting I thought was going to go to midnight out of all the ones we had, but...
Yeah, me either. So, that's good. Thank you.
I'm hoping this is a relatively simple one, even though it's an ordinance and, and relatively straightforward. As you'll recall, this issue was brought before you, I think it was in December. There is a, a change in the California Code of Regulations applying to these water-efficient landscapings and issues involving that. The way the, the state set it up, you can either adopt their ordinance or their regs, or you can adopt your own, but your own can't be any less strict than theirs. So, you can adopt stricter ones if you want, or you can adopt theirs, is essentially what it comes down to. When you were confronted with the, the regs, they were complicated, it caused a lot of questions, and it was kind of a mire to work through. So, we received direction from you guys that you wanted us to come back to you with an ordinance, not to create a more restrictive set of rules, but simply to work as sort of a guidepost, so that city staff and people that need to apply for these permits and submit these reports have an easy way of sort of, an easy roadmap as to what they're supposed to do. So, that's all this ordinance does. In other words, this ordinance doesn't change state law, it's not intended to modify it. It's really just intended to, I guess, explicate it. And, and that's, that's all we've done here in this ordinance. You'll notice that there are pointers to the regulations throughout the ordinance. Essentially, it's like a, kind of, it's intended to be kind of a, a user's guide, I guess, to the regulations. You know, you have to do this, go look in this section, and then you have to do that, go look in this section, is what it amounts to.
And you know what happened? Right off the bat, the county building department started shoving this down our builders' throats, after we determined in council meetings that, that with our restrictions on landscaping, it really doesn't apply. But they were telling all the contractors they had to go get a landscape contractor.
So, it's already, there's already confusion.
But, but I think we've gotten that straightened out, right, Lauren?
Yeah.
So...
Well, hopefully, this will help.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I have none.
Okay, so, we're going to, oh, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion? Any other public comment?
Just a quick question. What about enforcement?
Water District has that authority.
I understand that, but what about this?
On the, on the watering and that kind of issue.
Right.
But also, as far as landscaping, that's covered by the building department.
Right. I get that. Keith?
What's, what's your question? I'm not sure I understand it.
Enforcement. Will the city be enforcing this ordinance?
Yeah.
The city will be.
Yeah, it's a city ordinance.
Okay. That was my question.
But the violation of, of the watering restrictions...
That's a different, that's a different subject. This is, this is when you're...
Different, that's with the city. I mean, the water district.
When you're constructing certain things, you need to submit certain plans and designs as, as part of that process. That's what this has to do with.
And Tom, this, any landscaping less than five hundred feet is exempt, and concrete and rock and things like that don't count as landscaping, so...
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about paragraph twelve, nine, thirteen, sub four. A lava, a lava irrigation days and hours shall be determined by the city council of, of resolution. So, will the city be having a resolution determining the days and hours, and will they be enforcing it?
We will. We haven't done that yet. We're trying to make sure that it's consistent with, exactly identical to the requirements by the water district. And my understanding is that we're anticipating that the water district's the one that will be looking for violations.
Actually, the water district is looking for violations, and they are enforcing it.
My point is, though, when we have a resolution, we, we're also an enforcement factor. We're, will there be wording deferring enforcement to the water?
No, I mean, theoretically, we could enforce it, too, but they're under a very, right now, they're under a very specific mandate from the state board on, on, for water conservation, so that they've got the incentive to spend the resources on that. I guess, in theory, maybe in the future, if, in a different world, we might, the city might decide it wants to enforce it, too, or instead of. It, it will be a law of the city that will be enforceable by the city.
Okay.
But we're deferring it to the water district.
But we're, yeah, but we're electing to, to allow them to enforce it for the time being.
I get it. But what happens when, when the chief has somebody come in and says, I enforce you to enforce this law? Just a point.
Okay. So, is there any other public comment? Okay, two motions requested. A, motion to waive reading in full of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest municipal code as it relates to water-efficient landscape.
So moved. Second.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
For approved, one absent.
Okay, the next one is motion to introduce by title only an ordinance of the city council, the city of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest municipal code as it relates to water-efficient landscape.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
For approved, one absent.
Okay, committee reports. Keith, I know that you said you wanted to get out of here as early as you could, because you are, have been up since six o'clock this morning, and you've got to drive back. So, do any of us have anything we wanted to ask him before that? Perfect.
Good night, folks.
Good night. Okay. Committee reports. City Org and Services Committee.
City Org fell on the same night as the Kern report last Wednesday, so we were dark. We will be meeting on February twenty-fourth at five o'clock.
Okay. The infrastructure.
Oh, just had it here.
Jim, you were sharing that?
Yeah. Let me grab my agenda here from the infrastructure committee. Oh, no, this is it. Okay. So, we met, yeah, I've got it here. We met on the twenty-first of January, had a very productive meeting. We discussed the Murray Middle School traffic circulation issue, the, the water ordinance that we just voted on tonight, was one of the items we talked about, and also just an update on the Downs widening project. So, we discussed changing the meeting date, but apparently, because we didn't agendize it properly, we didn't actually vote on that. We're, we're planning on holding a, a special meeting on, I don't have the date here. I think we said the second Thursday is what you requested, right, Mike? We, we based it on what your request was to change the date.
I requested we move the meeting to the fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday, okay.
I can't make it on the second, and now I can't make it on the third, because I have Kerncoff on the third.
Okay. So, our plan is to hold a special meeting on the fourth Thursday, at which time we'll properly agendize that to vote it, vote on it to change permanently the schedule. So, that concludes my report.
Okay, Ad-Hoc Water. We didn't meet, and we're going to meet on the twenty-second of February, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Parks and Rec and quality of life.
We got the report from Jason Lass, Lass Meeting, that's the update, is what's going on.
Okay. Ad-Hoc Youth?
We won't meet until a little later, on the second Wednesday of this.
And the Action Committee?
Did not meet.
Okay, Ridgecrest RACVB.
Met today. Luke is to become a member of the Subcommittee of the Film, Layout Zone in California statewide, recommended by Janice, the president and film commissioner Lacy of the Sacramento and Beverly, Louis of the Lake Tahoe, Nevada. January fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, the RACVB attended the IWV EWC luncheon with a guest speaker, former Governor Pete Wilson. On the twenty-seventh of January, Luke attended the Kern County State of the County Dinner in Bakersfield. On the 27th of January, Luke attended the Kern County State, the county dinner in Bakersfield. Our, RACBB will be, will have an article on the Greater Antelope Valley Economic Alliance 2016 Economic Roundtable Report. Elizabeth introduced the new 2016 format for the Richcrest Film Commission filming report, providing more transparent information. Deborah updated the 2016 membership billing and advisor directors of research completed on the advertising for the RACBB marketing committee. Popeye attended, reported on the RACB marketing committee meeting held Tuesday, February the 2nd, and then on February 27th and 28th, 2016, the RACBB and board members will have a booth at the Los Angeles Travel and Adventure Show in Long Beach, California. And on April 16th, the Kern County 150th Birthday Bash, the RIVBC First District Coordinator, Lauren Petty advised 12 organizations agreed to participate in the event activities. And on the 18th of June, the IPW will hold, will, will be held in New Orleans, Louisiana. Luke will be attending and work with the visitors, California promoting the desert region. One or two more things to go along with that. We had a good meeting today, as you can tell. We are looking to have, work on a new report, or introduce a new report to that committee, the STAR report, that would give us more accurate numbers in reference to reporting to our taxes, or the hotels that are reporting all of the taxes to us so we can better track it. The other thing is we, we'll have a presentation on March to the city council from the RACB in reference to the $8,000 that we granted them to have, and they will bring us that report. We had, yesterday, we had our Secretary of Defense that was here with us, and the 395 sign is on target to be completed, or to bring us up, updates as they're going along, and there'll be three races, off-road races that will be going on February, March, and April. And that concludes the report.
Okay, other committee boards and commissions.
I would like to report on Kern cog.
Please.
First of all, the first thing they did, this was first Kern cog meeting I've ever attended, they had a presentation on new electric, all-electric transit buses. And it's pretty neat, they pull into the station and they recharge in five minutes. And, and tie there just a mere $750,000 apiece, we might want to order four of them. Just kidding. A, a big topic at the last meeting was this article titled, "What Is at Risk?", says, "Today, the California Transmission Commission approved a negative revised 2016 fund estimate for revenue that finances capacity increasing transportation projects of regional significance. New funding for the next five years is non-existent, and programming the current 2014 state transportation improvement will have to reduce by $750 million statewide." The impact on that, on Kern cog, is $15 million. And so they are cutting two programs, one of them is US 395 Alancha-Cartego, and the second one is State Route 14 Freeman Gulch Segment 1 for a total of $22 million. So, and, and then they gave a report on what has happened to state funding. It seems back in 2010, in their infinite wisdom, let me find it here, they changed tax-based excise tax and weight fee swap. The fuel swap tax of 2010 eliminated general sales tax on gasoline and created a price-based excise tax. And so the weight swap, the weight fee swap uses commercial vehicle registration fees for debt service. So what they did is they transferred, they figured, well, we bought a bunch of bonds to improve roads, so this fee ought to pay for the bonds. So in 2010, that was approximately 30% of that money, and how that money's broken up, it's broken up 44% to local roads, 44% to state and local capacity improvements, and 12% to rehabilitation of state highway system. That's how this money's supposed to be split. This year, 75% of that money is going to pay the bonds. So there's very little left for us, and that's why they have a $750 million shortfall this year. So it's falling on the cities and counties. So it's pretty dire-looking circumstances, and they're investigating different ways to try to figure out. Part of the problem is, I think, we pay 18 cents a gallon in state taxes for gasoline, and number one, that was, that was put into effect around '92, I think they said. So inflation has wiped out some of that over the years, they haven't raised it since then, and then they're taking it all to pay the bonds, and people are using less gasoline. So the funds for improving roads and repairing roads is dwindling. And that was the optimistic report to Kern cog. So anyway, otherwise, you know, the meeting was only 75 pages long and it went pretty fast.
They generally do.
Except for the report on the buses, that, that took a while.
Any other? Okay, city managers' report. Chief.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to announce tonight that I received word yesterday that the Kern County Sheriff's Department's going to be closing our local Richcrest jail. It's being closed due to budget cuts at the county level. This cut was recommended by the sheriff and approved by the Board of Supervisors unanimously. The effects that it's going to have on the city of Richcrest and including the entire Indian Wells Valley is significant. For us, we arrest about 2,500 people a year, and of that amount, we have about 1,200 that are booked into the Kern County jail system. About 25% we transport to either Mojave or Bakersfield at this time because of administrative or medical issues, and we normally book about 900 here locally. Well, that 900 is now going to have to be booked in Mojave and/or CRF Central Receiving Facility in Bakersfield. We're anticipating it's probably going to be about a 50-50 split. What does that represent to us? It's going to represent about 4,000 hours of lost public safety time for the Richcrest Police Department on the streets of Richcrest. That's, that's two full-time police officers, the time we're going to lose. How this affects the entire valley, we have the largest presence in the valley, public safety-wise, the sheriff's department has a lot smaller footprint. They also book people in the local Richcrest jail. So what it's going to mean is, it's going to mean that we're going to have officers on the road and not on the streets available to respond to calls for service as effectively as we've been. The solution to this, we're working on, but for the time being, this is just going to be a dramatic effect. Typically, a trip to Mojave, best-case scenario is three hours. Trip to Bakersfield, best-case scenario is five hours.
Now, Tom mentioned that he thought we paid $200,000 a year to Kern County for?
Once upon a time, when the RDA was in effect, that was a payment that went to the county for the use of the jail.
But we're not paying that now?
No.
So that money's not available?
That was just, that was just part of the RDA funding stream that they had at one time or another. Now, the sheriff's department is reimbursed by the state on most felony arrests. However, some misdemeanor arrests, they don't. Normally, we do not book the normal misdemeanor subject at Kern County, most of them are felonies or DUI for detoxification. So it is going to be very problematic on how we're going to make this occur, because as you can tell, 1,200 a year, that's almost three times a day. And there are complications with how you transport people because there's how you classify them. Some prisoners can't be in the same car with other prisoners, yeah.
Because if you could take two or three over at a time, that would cut a little bit down, but you can't really have them right next to each other, can you?
Right, so we're going to try working on a plan, not unless the county changes their mind. For whatever reason, we were singled out as the area to get cut. We are the farthest municipality from the county seat, from where prisoners are booked. So like I said, it's going to have an effect not on Richcrest, but on the entire Indian Wells Valley population, in the unincorporated area, the remote areas. It's going to have an effect on, on how many officers we have out on the streets responding to emergency calls.
Could you modify, I know you got the cage in the back of the police car, can you modify that and put a divider in the middle so there's two cages?
There may be a thought about buying a transport vehicle that can accommodate that, where we can transport just different classifications of folks, yes.
Are there grants out there?
No.
No?
No, there's no grants out there. This is going to, their, their budgetary problems are going to fall squarely on our budgetary problems. So, you know, we're either going to be losing manpower on the street, or we're going to be paying a significant amount of overtime to have our officers transport, but then again, now we're going to have officers with no time off and tired, so it, it's going to be extremely problematic. And it's not, it's not an issue that we, that is happening like in less than two weeks.
I know, Chief, you had said that you were going to be preparing the costs of how you accomplish that. Do you know when you'll be able to tell us so we know how to deal with that?
Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow at 3:00 to discuss this at a staff level.
Short of, of understanding that everybody is going to do more with less, there is no extra money sitting in our budget to do this, is there?
There's always Mezural money.
Well, that's going to bring me to one of my, one of my points, I think it points out that Mezural is going to be a must-have.
Yes.
If we are going to keep our police department the way it is, and if we want our police department to be strong and proactive and not decide whether, and I'm not speaking for you when I say this, we need to arrest this one, but we're going to leave this one here because his, his crime is less.
Well, there is, there is, there is an alternative of not arresting people and releasing certain felons on citations, which can be very problematic if you're trying to control crime in your community. There is no good side to this at all. I mean, this is a, a horrible situation that's being brought, like I said, not to the city of Richcrest, but the entire Indian Wells Valley. I mean, it's a problem we're going to work through, I mean, there are, there are solutions out there. You know, it does not make much sense to continue to pay officers to transport people long distances or pay at an officer's overtime rate. So there may, we may have to establish a new classification of employee that may be able to, to do this for us at a, at a lower cost. So we are working our way through it, I mean, it's not the end of the world. It's just, it's just an issue that's been put on our doorstep we have to deal with.
Now, we have holding facilities here, right?
Yes.
But we can't use those to incarcerate?
Well, the problem is, is that they still have to end up in Bakersfield and booked into CRF to be able to be brought back to court. We will be using that facility to temporarily hold inmates until such time as they can be transported to either Mojave or Bakersfield.
How soon do you have to transport them after you arrest them?
Well, our facility is a 12-hour facility, so we can actually keep them for 12 hours, but there's a lot of other factors that come into play regarding, you know, there's a lot of people, we cannot even enter our facility, people with mental illness, people with injuries, people that are, have intent to harm themselves, so there's a lot of, a lot of people that won't even get to our facility. We will just, we arrest them, take them to medical facility, get them cleared, and we're on the road with them. So there's some that just have to go because, because by law, we can't put them in our So it's going to be a, it's, it's an issue we'll work through.
Okay, is there any other council comments on the chief's report? Any other public comments?
Not a discussion.
Okay, so, thank you, sir. Mayor and council comments. Mike?
After that dire report, I don't really have any comments.
Eddie?
I, I don't have any, Madam Mayor, just remember, this is the month of love.
Jim?
I'm just waiting for the good news that we keep working so hard to, to find. I just, it's, it's discouraging, but it just seems like at every turn, you know, that everything's kind of working against us with, with budget cuts and budget restrictions, and it's, it's just very frustrating. But I'm, I mean, this, this is very discouraging, the jail closure.
You don't want to sit there and take it so long?
I.
What do you suggest we do?
You don't want me to answer?
No.
I would have asked.
Well.
But make it short. Not, not now. I'm in the middle of, well, let me finish, at least.
He's making his comments.
This is the first we've, I've heard of it. So you could get all upset as you want, I'm upset too. The fact of the matter is, I'm not going to have a knee-jerk reaction into a solution where I don't really even understand the problem yet. So I'm, I'm going to take my time and, and understand this, as well as, I'm sure the chief is going to do the same, and the staff's going to do the same. But I, I'm, I'm, I'm just very discouraged right now, so that's all I have to say.
Now, this isn't the first we've heard of, I mean, they've been talking about it for a few months, but this is the, the official decision.
This is official.
Was I out of line in asking, Tom?
I don't think any of us are, are want to react and need, need your, need your effort, but quite frankly, I think we do, and we will, but based on knowledge rather than emotion, and I think that's the best way. Did anybody want to see this? Did anybody like it? I doubt it very much. I don't think the Board of Supervisors wanted to see it or like it, but they did what they thought was best. Was it best for us? That's going to be our choice, and we're going to have the chief, the chief. Lord, I am tired. The chief, you're going to have Ron give us some options and look at what we can do and go from there. I do think we need to voice our concerns, and I don't think that's unexpected. So, any other comments? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just a moment.
Thank goodness. Do we get a second?
Hit it.
Okay, well, we're adjourned.
We're all in favor.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, thank you for staying so long, and thank you out there for listening.